URL. The policy meeting of the planning commission to order for the business budget of allegiance. Base of lag.
Actually, which was distributed by the United States of America and through the Republican Party stand on nation, on God.
The roles, right? We should break them up. Mr. Williams. Mr. Thomas. Yeah, I think we're missing. The other. Love it. We have a forum, so we'll move on to announcements.
So I just forwarded you guys, Jacob L. Planning Director, just for you guys, a couple or an email with a couple of legislative changes that were approved. Uh, this round, um, one is on broadband. So there was a change to. In addition to Lupa to have broadband into land use planning. So. Some regulations, it's mostly on the processing time of cell tower permits. Um, so we'll need to workshop that. It doesn't come effective until July first. Um, so we'll need to workshop that and align it, align our code with that new statute. Um, I also gave you the. The changes to the APA Commission, um, new statute. What's that sixty seven ninety seven found in bright? Um, there were some changes there that like very clearly delineated the APA Commission. Um, authority and like their regulation side, um, to clearly say it's not anything to do with land years. Um, so there's no, it prohibits the any jurisdiction from requiring a comp plan map or zone change in conjunction with the EPA request. It also changes the processing type. So you can see that, um, that changes, not, not, nothing actionable by the planning commission. Just be aware of. Um, kind of the guidance we're receiving through this changes in legislation. So. Other than that, I don't have any other announcements.
All right, um, we'll do the consent agenda. You see approval of the minutes on April first, twenty five. They have a chance to read the notes, any corrections, modifications, alterations, objections. Uh, hearing done, uh, minutes are approved. I will move to public comments. Everybody come forward. Don't be shy. Don't make a comment about anything. All right. So we'll move to the workshop with implementation of the opponent. Did you, uh, to review the. From the table and the polls, the policies of the various. Proponents. And, uh, so start this back to. That gesture, like one plus two, they had land use. Session. Now, I suggested some others, so I would, I would suggest that we go through, uh. Policies again. Like a player's. Uh, maybe add it or expand it on. So I think the first one we discussed, first policy, I think we discussed, uh. It's not. Let's, I gotta change one there. To. My first change was on six. Where I added. Uh, based upon the land use analysis, sufficient number of residential parcels exist or could be created. And current zoning density. Therefore, modification of zone. All right, number seven, I added, which was always on requests and building location permits should be reviewed by the applicable state agency, PhD. I will review, um, and, 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 and you know, you are prior to the. Think this was. Suggested in the language, my miss, we're back to the. The language of the, uh, land use. We'll leave it out. Number eight, I. And on, that's an all my ability, putting this region should be maintained. Provide for adequate design and development standards for the high density recreation. Basically, you can sweep a sweet little bit, then you snowball it all, but it's about three thousand. That's thought. Number nine, I think was suggested by one last time. Well, three is sort of the, uh, language of seven sixty five oh two. Number ten, I think I added, uh, due to the wildfire threat in county evaluation route should have limited from making managers decisions and update land use code. Uh, number eleven. Well, mapping of land use designation should have homeage immunity with the surrounding area. Well, is similar to that as areas have specific individual land use designation to fill the homeage in any across the landscape. Uh, islands of different, uh, land use designations by. Sense of rural context, especially if the rural countries are marketable, so. That's gonna be the. Permanently, I think, did the best. And we just, I think we discussed thirteen. That, that, that language in there, but. Can't expect the. Every piece of possible and every language that. So those are my suggestions and the. So its improvements hopefully. Eleven and twelve. Discuss the same. Not much of an issue, but. I just wanted it to be two or almost like eleven. Sets it up for twelve. About that, I guess, but. I don't know if it needs to be something. Could be easily combined? Sure. Even just put a little sentence, eleven into twelve, or vice versa. Yeah, that would work. Yeah. They, they're both strong statements. But it's just, dude, since you cover the same thing, isn't necessarily the two policies. As we combine eleven and twelve. If that would be what, anybody else think that would not work at all? No. I, I do have a question on number seven. Yeah, um, all the regional requests and total location permits should be reviewed by the typical state agency, PhD, I've been, you got, black card to approval. So the, the, the situation we have with building location permits. What was currently happening is they're giving me how many days notice, ten days, what do you, something like that now. Panhandle Health, which was, um. Jason Peppin?
He's the, I think he's the area manager.
Okay, so it was Jason Peppin, it was Catherine. And the board and staff had a workshop, I guess, was two months ago, three months ago, maybe. I watched it on YouTube. Anyway, the question was posed. Are there issues by just giving them the notification and what is it happened specifically said, other than a few fringe cases is working very successfully? So I don't know if we need to change anything. In the putting of occasion. Well, is this a change or is it? I don't know. That's what I, why is it, it's a policy. That's all.
Which statement are you talking about?
Seven, seven. So we're just saying they should be reviewed. We're not saying that they have to have approval.
Well, that was my question. This is just, this is the process thing, right? Um, what are we?
What are we asking them to review on what basis or against what criteria?
We don't ask a separate agency to do something in these policies. I wouldn't think. I don't think they'd like to offer you. So it's just a statement they, they should be reviewed. If they. Come up with something that they need to say relative to it, substance, that's up to them. As all has been. Well, we, you know, Catherine came to one of our, uh, at workshops. And we had, uh. I've never wished, say, you know.
I think it was the last one here.
Yeah, the last one here.
Yeah.
Um, and she basically said that they have, they have sufficient staff. To review this. Okay. But still a question out of the undue delay. So I mean, that's one question is, is the current process. Fall in line with, is it meeting number seven? I don't know if this. Well, there we do it. At least Ben. I don't know about the doing water. I doubt you're getting anything back from my queue. No. Zone change. EQ basically. Would only apply to the sewer, this is, gotta tell us, say yes or something. Yeah. Um.
You don't have that. You do at a building location permit stage, but not a rezone.
Yeah.
So nobody's, nobody's even done anything, lot design that a reasonable stage.
All the same, you don't even have to. Revolve the old and do something wrong.
Right. I guess that's the one that is a little bit more.
Yeah.
They, you know, exactly what we would be asking them. To review.
Not a reason, yeah, just some change.
Been have, seems like that, that's some criteria to review against.
All of the high density zones, or sorry, the comp plan designations include this similar language when it comes to. Yeah. Changing from one comp plan designation to the next. So. It would make sense to include that in their zoning. I think you're essentially requiring somebody to put up what their plan would be upfront. So that you're not just looking at a rezone and all the potential options, but this is, this is the, the plan for this property. So then you're getting DEQs by end.
So should, so should we be using the word rezone or should we say for all comprehensive and then comply on then? I think the reason is really where you, the rubber meets the road is. Sure, yeah, but. And. Is the, is the term rezone in code or is it?
It should be, it should be zone, don't change.
Well, that's need to change. Yeah. But still. Does this call for him to say? All zone change requests and building location, a building location, that says what it is, it's residence, it's a commercial. A zone change doesn't. Nobody didn't say that. Zone change requests. Plus specifically identify the, the future use subsequent to the zone change. I mean, we talked about that time and time again, and have held back from doing it, but. Obviously adds another.
Because you have another policy saving, sure.
Yeah.
So as far as the building location permits side, he goes, I, I recently did a. Get feedback. Do you guys hear that? Sorry. I recently heard, held a workshop with the board accounting commissioners and we reviewed. Almost in its entirety, the title eleven. And in that, the direction I got was to include changes to PhD's review on building location permits so that. They continue to have the ten day review for non-habitable structures. So like shops and barns and chicken coops and whatnot, anything that requires a building permit. Um, but for dwelling units to make the change to require PhD sign up before we accept an application. So part of the application contents. So similar to how it used to be prior to, I think, two thousand and eighteen, I think. But only for habitable dwellings, essential.
Well, this policy statement is basically consistent.
Yes.
So well, the part of it is, the, the part that applies to building per.
Sure.
Location, the building location permits is, but it's not clear about rezone requests. E- essentially if we're creating a policy and says, you have to have. Uh, some preliminary design information. About what you're going to do with these properties, these multiple properties, right? Subsequent to the rezone, that's a pretty significant change.
Wait, it's the same.
Down on what, what zone changes, and if you're changing into a high just here. I'm not going to give you. Comments at the public hearings on zone changes. You know, that, that's the main concern and recall for people as well. We don't know exactly what the future uses it can. So can't that be the follows? Um. And it comes up also at the, um. Ag twenty to ag ten and R ten, R five. It's come up. Why isn't there a PhD sign up that says that it can be done? So it's not just review, it's, it's PhD saying they're gonna conduct the preliminary investigation. Uh, as a, uh. As a lead into the zone change order of the LP. That's not, that's. I, I don't know what we, what we discuss that with. With, uh, PhD. Getting the total of it in that official investigation, which they have a process for.
Oh, Catherine's online. She's raised her hand if you guys want to ask her that. Okay, great. We got seven more. Jesus. Yeah. I happen to say, go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, hi guys, um, it's Catherine at Panhandle Health. Um, I'm, I guess I'm just not, I, I guess I just wanted to make you aware that I was here. Um, if I'm not sure, there was a lot that included PhD just in the past few minutes, so. I guess what are your, what would be your specific question or? Something I could answer?
So Catherine, that's a don, um. You can see on the board that. Policy number seven.
Uh huh.
See that? Okay. So that just says that Panhandle and the others will be asked for, for a review of the don't change application or building location. Fine. But does that? Do you take that as therefore? You will. Uh, would that applicant do a preliminary site investigation? And approve or not? At that stage or, or not? Is this, is this period of that?
Well, from Panhandle Health's perspective, we would always love to do a site investigation because that's been for. You know, ten years we've been talking about this off and on about. Um, the fact that. Until we get out there and we have our boots on the ground and we look at test holes and we measure all the water and the slopes and everything that we need for our jobs, we can't. Say our reviews are. Minimal in terms of what we can tell someone just on paperwork or looking at their application. So. Um, it really would hinge on what you guys would expect from our review and if they need to do a site evaluation. I mean, that's just the, the facts are the facts that we can't really do an evaluation or give some official. Comment unless we've done our, a site evaluation. So. If that is what's necessary in order for us to give a, um, a response to you guys or a review to you guys that would make sense for a zone change, then. Um, I guess. That would somehow be incorporated into this. Um, not sure what that would look like, but. It does remain the same that we definitely can't be making calls without. Doing the work we need to see what's going on in that site. So.
I think that would, that would satisfy the comments that we've heard many times in public hearings on zone changes. About, well, how do we know? First off, what is it that the zone change is for? What specific use? And second. Can it be done on the property? And septic is a key element of that. So. And a building location permit as well. It's a little softer because they're at that stage. That's the. That's where the building meets the ground. Things are pretty well set, but still. Uh, it seems. Pretty relevant to get that done on a project, but it's major, major change.
So if someone came in and wanted to rezone. Um, they don't have to tell us why they're doing it. They just want to go from a different point, for example. Twenty to ten.
Yeah.
Um, how is any agency gonna come in and evaluate? What is it? I think somebody brought up, what is it they're evaluating when somebody wants to go from forty to ten? Till they actually say what they're gonna do and request up the LP, for example. I'm not sure I understand what anybody would look at other than just the county looking to see whether the zone is in. And in accord with the comprehensive plan and other, you know, well, posts.
So on, on rezones. Um. There's this part of state statute says that the, the county commissioners need to. We should probably pull this up on my butt, because I'm gonna paraphrase it. Um, evaluate the, or consider the impact on service providers of that rezone. So. Um, if somebody's changing from a twenty acre to a ten acre zone and. They need, they get comments from these different agencies on the potential impact that has, they need to consider that in their requests or in their deliberation and in their decision. So. Take like an ambulance district or a fire district that's gonna be at capacity or near capacity and they don't have a way to serve the potential density, the impact of that rezone. Then that's a rationale to deny that zone change. Uh, from twenties to ten.
Potential, that word.
Correct.
Potential density in the code?
No, I mean, it's, it's, that, that's the logical route, right? You're, you're allowing a potential density from, let's say you have two hundred acres, right? You're going from, you know, ten to twenty units. So that's a. Real change in what's allowed in that zone. So a good, oh, Catherine jumped that guy. And so the question I have for, for, for PhD would be, what is, what would be required from the applicant on a, on a zone change request? Looks like she's there. So Catherine, uh, what would be required if somebody is saying they have fifty acres in a five acre zone? And they want to go to suburban or fifty acres and ten acres and then they want to go to R five. What would PhD need to be able to do an onsite evaluation? Would you need a full plat? Or is it just, we're changing from this to this and can you come and do a site evaluation?
I'm sorry, my, our power is going now and so now I'm on my phone and I was kind of frazzled. Um. I, so if someone's going from a, a ten, a twenty to a ten or a ten to a five for a zone change, is that the question and what would we need to verify that?
Would you need like a, like a plat map or like a proposed subdivision?
Uh, what we would just have someone, I mean, and it kind of depends what their ultimate goal is of, if we're taking. We have two ways of doing fees. One is septic permitting or one is land development. So if their end goal is like, I know that I want to split this land. Probably what we would do is have them apply for a preliminary soil analysis, which could do ten test holes. It's five hundred dollars. Um, so in that way, they could show us like where they're proposing their lot lines and it could be. We could do test holes on multiple parcels or whatever, but it's just for planning purposes. And we would just go out, do the site evaluation test holes like normals. They would tell us what they're thinking about doing. It doesn't really result in anything other than information, but that would be the key information for them to then. Move forward and make those new lots down the road. Another option, if they thought, oh, we're gonna only do like two lots for this zone change or whatever, and. We know we're gonna ultimately want septic systems on these. Someone could, in theory, I guess, go down. Our other fee pathway, which is leading towards a septic permit. And just pay for a five hundred and fifty for a speculative site evaluation, which again. Both of those things would be for information only, but it would get us out there looking at the ground, measuring everything. So both of those, whether it's the five hundred or five fifty. Would be the first avenue to get us out there for a site eval, so we could make, get the information we need.
And time wise. So somebody makes or makes, I guess they have to make the application for a zone change with the county, an application. And then kind of send it to PhD. With what time, thirty days?
No, I, I think the, the better route to go is require this as part of the application. So where's, so where's your, yeah, where's your review from Panhandle Health? So we would require that if you're gonna want to go from tens to fives. We need that information upfront as part of the, the application content.
So the onus is on the applicant to do it and they would. Spend the money to do it so that it's a complete application.
Correct.
All right, now it makes sense.
And from a time wise standpoint, I, I want to make this clear because I hear that various things about this a lot. Everything. We're only one part of this puzzle, so everything hinges on availability of the. Whoever the. Person is operating the equipment, the applicant and all that stuff, because I've definitely heard over the course of different things through the years. Timeframes being blamed on Panhandle Health that are totally out of our control. So someone would have to come here. Apply for their permit, pay the fees, and then once the. That application, our application goes to our inspector. Then it just sits there until these people call us and schedule with their equipment to dig the test holes and do the site eval. So. You know, however quickly they move along with that. Then they get on our inspector's schedule and as we get into the busy, busy season. We're still adequately staffed right now to basically get out and do stuff within, you know, two weeks. Um. Uh, even during our busy time last year, we were getting stuff done within two weeks. So. That would, and then we'd have a few days to get the report out, but you know, in theory, someone could really bust this out pretty quickly.
So that was, that was a concern because if there's a. Potential for delay, then that's gonna hit the pan.
Sure.
Timeline back in the process. I think we have to remember that this is a policy statement, this is not code. So to implement it, um. It's kind of beyond, or well, but if the policy could say. Um. Uh. Applications for zone changes and building locations, that's. Should, should or shall, whatever, include, uh, basic approval for. System or some sort of system from. Right, well, now that's, that's where we're going with this, well, you know.
We would at least know that the site is generally suitable, you know, they wouldn't until someone came in with their finalized plan and all that. Then we would determine like the nitty gritty of what type of system and where and. We would be looking for any spot on a part, on their proposed new parcels that. Has any type of septic suitability, even if it's a complex system, whatever it is, but. Which is better than some cases where their main, you know, and there are examples of this of parcels created. That don't have suitable spots for septic because they weren't assessed, um, in the beginning phases.
So it is a word correct, what they talk about. On sewer district areas, we're referring to most sewer basic, whatever the right wording is. But make a policy out of that so that then can be codified. Alright, so how do we change this? Well. Hey, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Catherine, if I may.
Sure.
Catherine Smith, Matt Williams, I hear, um. I referenced a meeting, uh, that yourself and Jason, staff and the board of county commissioners had. I was seeing this two or three months ago, but now thinking back, it was during that time when, uh, DEQ was proposing different changes. And it was in review, if I'm not mistaken, uh, there were some new systems. That were gonna go ahead and be allowed in the area and also the setbacks were gonna be. No, man.
No, man.
Going to be strong. Are you know, have those actually happened?
Um, I don't recall it really being a topic about reduced setbacks. I'm not, there aren't any, I can tell you there's no reduced setbacks and and they wouldn't be based on a system. I think maybe there's something conflated there, but any of our alter, we have many, many alternative systems. Um, I'm not sure which one it is you might be referring to. We've had new additions. Uh, you know, many several different new products and stuff, but what they allow is reduce setbacks to groundwater. Uh, surface water like our rivers and lakes and ponds and stuff, that's not impacted by the type of system. That's those setbacks always stay the same. Um.
Yeah, it was those, it was those setbacks from rivers, lakes and stuff uh for, I think on eight type soil, change it from a three hundred down to a two hundred.
Okay, well, then that maybe what you're talking about, there was proposed rule changes going through the legislative process this year. And they never got voted on, so they just fell by the wayside and as we know, the legislative session ended. So I'm not sure what's going to happen with those. So the short answer is the setbacks to surface water remain the same for this season.
All application for zone change requests and building location permits should be reviewed.
Or is it kind of a policy statement at this level? And we know that, you know, the code has a specific requirements between eleven and twelve or whatever. Can't we just simply say what our intent here is is that we want to ensure that any changes to, I'm going to just say to common plan, whether it's the rezone or GLP or any changes that affect the county's lands. Those are the worst reviews. Will get the appropriate review feedback slash approval from the relevant agencies.
I I think that's too broad. These policies are going to lead towards changes in the code, right? So if we want to require new and and if we want to require like new application contents or a new review process for for zone change requests, then we need to have a policy to state what that change is going to be and then we'll codify that in more specificity in the the land use scope.
But I think it should be reworded.
Sure.
Because it's not the requests that should be reviewed. What you're suggesting, I think, is that the allocations should include review by applicable state agencies or the results of review, everyone word that. That's what we said. I I think I've also heard, just so we're all clear, that in order for Panhandle Health to do what they're suggesting, all reasonable requests would have to include at least some sort of preliminary plat.
That's why I asked that because I just want to see like what is the impact of this and what would be required of the applicant if that's upfront.
I think that's potentially the bigger issue is you'll hear people saying, well, but I have to now invest a lot more money you know, into the design of my project before I even know if a reasonable request is going to be approved. Um, which some people may say, so what? But that's this, that is the impact. It's always been.
And we don't, we don't ever evaluate the the cost of something when it comes to land use. Someone, if if something's required or a a new review comes in, like we never take into consideration like the cost of that geotech. Like I, that's what the code requires. So if that's what we need to protect health, safety, welfare and and better consider rezones in the future, then that's what it is. And I I think it's good to be sympathetic of the cost, but at the same time, um, just know as planners, we never consider what that is. So. Uh, like Catherine has her hand back up.
Well, I think, I, you know, I'm not sure that. So I have advice and I've seen how these zone changes have been and looked at at the mission level. They seem to want to know what's going to happen, what are they going to do with property anyway? So maybe it's really not that much of a stretch to say, well, and be a plat.
I don't know if that's sure has to be a plat. Granted, you know, somebody can say, well, we're going to split this and probably maybe an app, whatever. That doesn't guarantee, doesn't require them to do that. They're going to get approval from Panhandle potentially. Based on that line that's potentially on grounds, okay, there's an area, there's an area, we'll give you a preliminary site plan or site approval. If they deviate from that, Panhandle starts over. So it's it's a, I mean, it can work, but try not to put a big burden, a super burden on the applicant. Way up front and that's always been their concern. Well, we don't know what we're going to do, so. Um, and and they say haven't, well, if they're ready to to propose a zone change, I've always argued, they know pretty well what they're going to. And now they've talked with engineers, they've talked with surveyors, they've talked with maybe the neighbors. They pretty much know what they're going to do. Maybe the details need to be worked out, but why are they doing it? Why are they proposing a zone change if they don't know what they're going to do? So. I think that's darn close to a movie issue to say, you know, we're splitting the burden on them. Um, it's earlier than they're expecting, for sure, but again, it's what the neighbors need for security to know what the neighbors are doing. It's what uh the 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 services need to know, uh, rather than getting blindsided by, well, we've got approvals and now we've got to do it.
Yeah, well, could somebody propose some language to change this?
Well, I still have some more basic questions. It's not at all clear to me what we would ask IDWR.
Yeah, that's that's sort of like.
Even if, even if we did say you got to come in as part of your application and you have to have a preliminary plat or be some preliminary site design, whatever you want to call it. So that everybody knows roughly what's what's planned to happen or what's contemplated. What would we ask IDWR?
Maybe it ends up being two policies, zone change requests. Um, an applicant shall divulge the potential use in concert with his own change. And then say, if it was really the only one that is is, well, it might be just damn. And one of the water resources were necessarily or um, we will do. The queue that sends out their seven page letter. And some of those, some of these things also are triggered up that next step. You know, if you're hooking up to an existing system or if it's going to be a new system, that that's that next step. Not building a location permit, but the actual plating requires some discussion as far as water source. You know, water source and um, oh, subject disposal.
So so this came, this came, basically came out of the. Yeah. And these three agencies were, so that's why it's in there.
So I think IDWR makes sense and especially if you're going from a low density zone to higher, like what are the water rights? Like the state spent a considerable amount of resources adjudicating water rights statewide. And as we move along the next decade, I think that's going to, we're going to see impacts of that adjudication. So at what point do does IDWR step in and say like, no, we can't allow more wells there?
Well, so that's my question. Is IDWR actually equipped to tell us in this area, there's enough water in the ground to support and wells of wide capacity? And I think the answer is no, they're not. Yeah, so what are we asking them to review? I would love it if they did, by the way. I would love it if they could definitively say, you're ninety percent of the water resources in this area and you shouldn't drill any more wells.
I think what.
I don't think that's realistic.
I think what they're lacking.
Because somebody's going to drill a well at this point, they need to.
Right, so.
But that's when they drill a well.
So I questioned.
Sure, but you fill out a form and send your fifty bucks in.
So during the adjudication process, I asked the representative of IDWR, say, okay, we're doing this now. What about the day after the court says, here are your water rights? There's still a process to apply. So I would imagine IDWR would look at an application and say, your property has this water right and it's point zero four cubic feet per second, but no, for that all. Now you're talking about dividing them. You've got to now apply for another parcel to see because you're talking potentially another water source. So the process, their process would kick in. I would say that would be the problem, we'd get back from all the resources. They're proposing a zone change in order to split the property, they need to reapply.
So I know on, I am conditionally use permits, we've required this a number of times where we were IDWR, like some documentation from IDWR that um water availability or water rights, something along those lines. So we get some sign off and then saying these people have this commercial well. And then it sometimes, depending on how many people are going to be served, it'll kick over to DQ, which will then consider that.
I think if they're, if you're talking about some, I'll just use a generic term, public water source or shared water source, right? Um, although in a lot of cases, then it's not IDWR, you'd be asking, it's whoever the organization is that administers that system. Um. I'm still stuck on exactly what we would ask IDWR to do in the, in the, in the general case in the rural parts of the county where we're talking about people drilling a well under law. Um.
I mean, maybe we don't say IDWR, maybe we say public insurance and there's water available. Well, it's still, it says that.
How do you determine that?
Well, that's the thing.
Well, if there's a water district, that's different and maybe we do need some language to separate that out if it's something other than an individual well for an individual parcel.
They asked that question too. It's okay, we're adjudicating water rights. Where's the study that says our area has adequate water to issue water rights? Oh, we didn't do one. But three, four years ago now, I talked with a guy who came up from southeast Idaho. He did, or IDWR down there, extensive research was with uh uh monitoring wells all over the area to establish what was there. And he's trying to get it started here. This was three or four years ago. I haven't heard from him whether he's been able to do that, although I now, you pick up IDWR's website and they will show you monitoring wells and there are now some fifteen in the county that they have. So they're doing it, but where's the study? Where's the results? Yeah.
So I mean, this could be a really good opportunity to reach out to them and ask them. How how do, how can we craft a policy that would help you guys add more monitoring wells or add, you know, even follow their own regulations? So same thing with DEQ. And I have, I have a contact for the folks that are in in Coeur d'Alene and I can ask him to to attend our next meeting. Or if if not, then we can send him an email with some specific questions and ask for response.
It might be, I mean, yeah, both agencies have an office in Coeur d'Alene. Um, and the guy who was going to do that study is housed at Ross or was housed at the office in Coeur d'Alene, God, it's our office. So contacting him should not be a problem or even just to the manager of the office to say, here's our questions, can you help us?
So the way this is drafted, you can probably tell that I initially had PhD. Why there's parentheses, very screwed up. Um, so maybe we eliminate that some of this section. And we add a section that says, with regard to building location permits, but it's a demonstration of water.
So.
Again, I I it may be appropriate, even at the rezone stage. If it is in an area that's being served by some some shared resource, whether it's a water district or a shared, whatever it might be, that there'd be some confirmation as part of the application, then yes, there's a capacity. We're planning to get water from 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 this source and they have told us that they have the capacity to serve whatever, whatever the rezone request implies in terms of additional users.
Good, that's a public water system, no matter which category is supporting the categories. One of the things that water resources look at, but your proposed users, do you have enough water in that well? Production and storage. If you don't have storage, if you don't have production, you got to have storage. And they want to know the number of people that are going to use it, retain it, so.
So it's almost like, in my opinion, we need a difference, a second additional statement can be part of the same policy, I think. That talks specifically about the case of the shared water resources. And and we may also extend the same thing there with shared uh shared sewer, right?
Well, within a sewer, well. Sewer district or a special.
The 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 specific case I'm struggling with is if it's, if the intention is individual wells and individual properties, it's not clear to me what IDWR could tell us about that. And again, I would love it if they could. It could be great if they could balance this, but I don't think they can.
Based on what I saw with those monitors though, they're not dense enough to tell that area, that area.
Yeah, it's not the way the underground water is in bars, it jump.
Let's try to try to make some progress. Um, so let's let's think IDWR, how they bring us to bed. And so all applications for zone change, for zone change, have to leave location permit should be.
But I think they should include the results of a review that by Panhandle Health and ID, of the applicable state agency, ID, you know, health ID too, because that's what we said, right? You know, Jay said, I'd rather, I'd rather get those results in the application rather than as part of the analysis of the application.
You want to, you make those changes, Jay?
Why call out these two specific applications?
Well.
I mean, there's a lot of conditional use permits that that impact water, water availability in sewer. There's a, and then subdivisions in general or land divisions have the same requirements, so.
I'm not land use, just land use applications.
Well, there's, I was thinking the same thing, but then there are like variances, there's a land use application that really doesn't affect this.
Um, and use applications that have impact on neighboring apartments.
Well, that's what I'm all, there you go.
Some people would say all of them do.
Yeah.
I don't believe that, but some people say that.
Well, the potential, potential to affect.
Sure. And and also your land, what what would you suggest?
I think we we look at the, this is a really good question for those agencies, like what would you like to review? Land divisions, um, commercial, uh, conditional use permits for commercial uses and, you know.
To a comprehensive map.
So perhaps we won't put off editing this one until we get the feedback from the relevant.
I think we're making some assumptions about what what they're going to have comment on and where their regulation stands. I think having Catherine on was really great to help answer some of those. I think we can get that same kind of input from those other agencies before we craft the policy around it.
I I just want to make sure because as a regional house, it's all we all, I read it as all building location that should be reviewed as well. But as you said, we should only have man they've not for any habit with instructions.
That was the direction I got from the board, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we need to go ahead and.
Be specific.
Yeah, sure, because if some of them wants to go ahead and have a garage, go BOP, they're going to say, well, we're giving you a letter from IDWR, PhD or IDQ and tell me that you're a hundred percent, great. What's that? As long as you don't put a bathroom in there.
Well, then, well, we also want to put building location that and to look at, make sure they're not putting the extension. And it's, and it's still got this separation from the well, et cetera, et cetera.
So there is, there's some level of review if I can. Like Eric said, if we get the feedback from the agencies, what, make it through, what would you like to review? And have that comment upfront as part of the application. And I could go to all three things. Because I could see someone coming back and say, well, it'd be nice to have that review at a complaint map of it. Because you're changing the whole area. Or some part of the whole area, there will do a different designation.
I just, I just really, I'll remind everybody, we're not lighting code yet, right, of policy, but we're setting up the policy so.
Though, with that policy, the ways written out, policies are key. And such as zone changes, zone change is probably the key thing that the code says has to be, cannot be consistent with the comprehensive policies.
So that's the, that's the line, right? So if you're, you want to be specific enough where some future planning commission and board of county commissioners can't look at this and say, oh, it's gray enough to say I can do it this way or this way. We want to be specific enough but not have all the details. That's what needs to be code codified and.
So so we inquire with these agencies, what are we asking them for?
What has the. Yeah, I I can reach out to them tomorrow and see. Yeah, I I can reach out to them tomorrow and see if they're getting a little price, our meeting on the sixth. And if not, then I can give them like what the idea that you guys are bouncing around and say what kind of applications in land use. Affect most your regulation or your your authority that you have and what do you wanna have more impact or control over? Right, or input on before a decision is made.
Again, think about. All my questions have to do with where can they have meaningful input, when can they have meaningful input?
Do they want that during the approval process or during the review and approval process, they want it before we even um have the application? I think we heard that from PhD, they'd rather have that upfront since even if it's even viable, right? Um or is it enough to put it as a condition after the fact and say, okay, go meet with these guys and satisfy their regulation?
It's, it is interesting because. Also, the agencies don't wanna waste time. Somebody's coming, well, I'm thinking about doing this. You know, and have you gotta pay them to run out, do some kind of renewal ground or something, when they really don't know yet, so. Uh it's like, okay, I've collected an application for our county, here it is, I'm gonna make it up, I need to have this stuff by you because I am making all this application, that's pretty sure. Uh it's true, my sphere. Dealing with the railroads here ago, well, I was thinking about this. Unless you show up with a bucket of money, I don't even like to talk to you.
We need to consider other organizations. As well as just these three agencies, again, like they can. School boards have a potential impact. Um what, I heard of somebody that's got twenty or eighty acres in a wildlife or where they wanna take it down to R five, something like that, is their. Yeah, organization that we want to.
Fire, fire districts.
Fire districts. We've talked a lot, we've done a lot of feedback, not making sure that we've got all the appropriate. Organization, I don't want to say state agents, organizations involvement and this whole process.
Interesting, um. Last night, the fire districts, the three fire districts had a meeting about the levees. The whole topic was we need more money because we're this and the other. So at the end, they asked the chief about growth and response to growth, a couple of basic questions. Uh with these levees and would uh impact these. Is the intent of the district to keep up with growth or keep ahead of growth? Or professionally extend them to allow whatever growth comes? It's a big question, huge question. But he didn't know, um so I directed him along with. To look at our land use analysis tool. Which somebody answers the question of what's coming. And and a few little permutation analyses of what if. Uh so it's there, but I challenge them to look at it and just say. Can you? Can you say now that that, well, maybe it's easier for five years, next five years, ten years, but we're about twenty, but about thirty. It's beyond the purview of what we're doing. But be prepared to look at it that way. And he's, that's reasonable, yeah, we should, cause he's saying now. We're we're barely able to support because of personnel. And and money, but because of personnel mostly, we're barely able to support the calls that we get. He wants to have four active firefighters on scene for a call. For the most part, he's got one. And he had story two, two stories, although one guy who showed up, he was there for twelve minutes. Which is a lifetime, but he said that was probably, yeah, anyway. But that's just fire, but what about the sheriff? Sheriff has. About what, two stations in the county, I'm pretty sure, and one here in San Point. Um my goodness, response back, the sheriff's office says the land people, um. Booms, no. Unless you've got a sheriff who lives in your neighborhood, the deputies, there's someone who's due. Response times. Long. So what are we, are we kidding ourselves, knowing we can keep up with growth or ahead of growth? Way beyond the topic, isn't this?
So in response to your comment, I think, yes, we probably should include something like that. I think the list is different, very different, for example, between rezon requests and building location permits. Now, I don't, I don't think. I don't wanna be the person who goes to somebody and says, we're gonna deny your building location permit, just the school board said no. I I think that's way past the time for them to make meaningful comment, not to make light of that, but so for rezon requests, I can see. Where you can do a theoretical analysis, so we're gonna increase the density, so theoretically that means potentially, you know. X more residents and that's gonna pose some additional need for services for fire and. But if I was building location permit, I think we may be only talking about. Fire from the perspective of access.
Exactly. And 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 that's covered that time of going location. You make the building application, then you go to fire district to get signed, then they put you through the riggers, you're right, we're big enough. Uh flat enough, whatever, what's it look like, how the way they're, what's it look like?
Remember, remember, we have, we have. Yeah, we have an invasion component for the schools. And we have one for public services.
Yeah.
And fire is put in in a extensively. And has got it in the public services, so I think we're gonna add something, it should be in that, it should be part of the.
And I I've had some thoughts about that since, so maybe last night. Um and talking with the chief. Well, we may, we may give the public services tonight, if you keep going, keep moving.
Well taken.
All right, uh so we're gonna hold on uh number seven, but we get some feedback, number eight. But a lot of comments about. You know, are we, are we eliminating the standards for? How about number nine, we talked about this a little bit last time.
That one's pretty much what we talked about.
And ten is uh has to do with fire, but it's. What evacuation routes.
Hey, Alan. Back on eight, so that we need to figure out, there's there's a challenge here. The land use code for Alpine Village under twelve dash three two nine, the Alpine Village District. It has the elevation at three thousand feet, the comp plan had it at thirty five hundred, um so we need to figure out which one it's going to be and then make it consistent. Or we change the code when they update that to thirty five hundred, I don't know where the elevation line sits on Switzer. I figured you copied from the old comp plan.
Yeah.
And I knew there's a conflict there that we need to resolve, and you guys removed it previously, so I wasn't too worried about it. Now you're adding this.
Well, I I don't know what it should be.
Yeah, we probably need to book it.
What should it be?
Why don't you check with, why don't you check with Ellen, why don't you go down to what should be?
I'll look, I'll look into, and I'll I'll take a look at the. The topography map and figure out where the majority of that mountain sits, but I wanna say it's something like. Four thousand feet is where the elevation is at the at the village.
That's, yeah, that's the base.
So and then where where does the firehouse sit and whatever, yeah. Maybe I can get G I S to give me two maps to give you guys a visual, what thirty five hundred versus three thousand people sign, and how far we want that that area to expand.
Okay, anybody know what? Well, thirty five hundred feet is meters. Stand by. Great, maybe it wasn't cheap, it's gonna be about twelve hundred. As if that's gonna give us the answer out of them. All right, number ten, is that okay?
Yeah.
And then we combine eleven and twelve.
I think eleven. Didn't we talk about just combining eleven and twelve together?
Yes, yes.
Oh, the way eleven is written, I would suggest a little editorial change. You can say the mapping of land use designation should create.
Can create set of house?
I guess I guess it's okay anyway, it's mapping to me. Reads like a, like a verb. Not a big deal, I I think if you just combine eleven and twelve together, make eleven the first sentence of that policy and leave the rest of the.
Yeah, that's what I've done.
And that's fine.
Do you wanna change that to create? As Dave suggested.
Okay.
I think we've done that, so. Any further review of land use until we get responses back? For uh number seven? Other additions? Um applications.
Thirteen, help me understand, what is it we're? What's the policy we're trying to say there, but?
It's more of an informational statement that. Not every. Parcel in each, they have land use designation, it's necessarily going to be a system.
Okay, I got that, so maybe it's not really a policy that.
Well. Maybe we need to write it with new policy, I don't know. I I know it's a response to a history of people coming in and saying. I look at my parcel and and it it doesn't have X. Which was in the land use designation, or it does have Y, and just nothing in some other language designation, therefore my parcel shouldn't be a different language designation. And I think this is sort of a reinforcement of the idea expressed in eleven and twelve. That. You know, we're looking in general, broadly speaking, we're looking for, looking for the creative marginous areas, but. Across such big areas, you can't expect every single parcel that exhibit. Every single one of the characteristics that are in the description of that land use designation. And and therefore don't create islands, you know, based on a parcel, but is missing one visit, one characteristic. Or has three characteristics from a different designation, you know, making sense? There's history of that.
Really kind of is. Maybe the last sentence is actually sort of a fall, it's not reasonable to respect in every parcel. Will perform in every detail. Of the geographic characteristics in some of the areas.
Yeah.
I think the lead into that is kind of important too. Explaining why that's at this.
Got any suggestions on a changer, Dave?
No, I feel it all.
All right, so we can move on to economic development. Hope everybody read the component. Um yeah, my suggestion off the bat are the um. Five to three. Three, four. Five, six are all great pulses. Now, on six, uh why would either add or? I'm I'm not sure how. We're forced, we're gonna try to uh develop work workforce housing in agricultural areas. Seems to me that recreation areas should be in there, recreation uses. When we keep agriculture uses in there, not, I'm not sure.
I think we had some comments, it was a long time ago, but from some people who were doing agriculture. Who. Who made a point that that would be helpful to them to be able to have workforce housing. If I remember correctly, it was some, somebody had a a fairly significant sized tree farm. Somewhere in the northern part of the county.
All right, well, then I would leave that, but then I would add recreational uses.
Just leave it, but add rec- recreations, yes, okay.
Then on the first policy, from this one, that's in here. Talking about powers of operation, traffic volume, I would also add light and noise.
But you mentioned that. This right now, this case, so therefore. Um goal number three. It may be an actual policy, but it's general and policy one spans.
Well, so my comment to three was a little bit sort of in line with what Alan suggested, but what I wrote. I put my comments in a different. Just write it as a policy statement, if there is a goal here, it's to mitigate the impacts of economic development on the rural character of the county. So that could be a goal just stated by itself.
Are you talking about policy three or goal or three?
I'm talking about, I'm sorry, it's objective three, oh, objective. Which Alan is suggesting is really a policy thing. Um and I'm sort of thinking we can. Maybe break it into two parts, there there is a, there is a goal there, which is to mitigate the impacts of economic development on the rural character of the county, I think. That's why we would do things like. Maybe getting noise, flare, light, noise, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, I always think of them as there's what statements, what do we want to achieve, those are the goals, and there's how statement, building the policy. So.
That's why, why don't you add, so I after. Maybe number the first goal where you add the mitigation. Language you just described.
So I would just say something like mitigate the impacts of economic development on the rural character of the county.
Then maybe to what it was now goal of objective three, probably. Really probably isn't needed because it's already a policy number one.
Unless you wanted to add the load factors, noise and.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean. The current policy number one, you can add the. Light, noise, then we need to have the stepping stones, it's a goal. Staying for a certain type of of subject and here's the policy regarding that goal. Strike three involves, there's nothing that leads to policy one.
I mean, there you go, I think what.
This this content industry's mentioned anywhere else involves. Again, like.
So you think leave three and and.
Well, either just leave three is, or modify it some, I think it's.
So, so I would take objective one and two. Thanks for making calls. Again, I'm I'm.
It is a goal, so we just combine goals to objectives, yeah.
Right, I'm looking at. I'm looking at the one that's currently adopted is where I went to.
We're all looking at different versions.
Yeah, at least I. Just then. Goal objective four becomes what you're suggesting. It just makes sense, you know, I should probably have policy, where's the stated goal? So move four. That would add the. They're suggesting that move four out of policy. It's such a policy. Well, so three could be a little bit clearer about that goal. An objective. And well, we talked about protecting the environment, we talked about. Buffering and design standards that encourage attractive and efficient function while protecting the environment, but we don't talk about mitigating. Those impacts to potentially kind of surrounding area of noise. Right? So. You know, I I got handful of sixty five away. Just listed as D economic. This is an analysis that you can only base on the area, including employment, industries, economies, jobs and income levels. It seems what we're what we're doing here in this component right here, I. I don't think we're encouraging any kind of economic resolve with any of these. We're kind of limiting. Different things, which that's fine to do as well. I don't see where we're encouraging any kind of economic development. I think these policies do that, it's a developed land use regulation that allow so and so forth. Develop standards for industrial development. That all that enables economic development. And by the way, if you read the. Component itself, it's exactly. To analysis of economic base, what's there? Yeah, it's very detailed. He's all saying support local like. Where do you use, you that from? Well, that was that was uh goals four, five and six. And we'll put nodes and policies out? No, well, we're talking about four. But again, I I advise the stepping stone approach, so something in a basic goal. Or uh. Encourage economic development activities, that's pretty broad. But that they need to proceed to mitigate impacts. Such as noise and white wear. Yeah, that's not especially said, some of those are, that's why we'd be more logically. Maybe that just springboards off of goal number one, support and encourage economic development. And goal, move that down, support local economic development. By making sure and also make sure that to protect um. This, that, the other. It's interesting. If there's a code that says you will not have a glaring light. There's nothing to mitigate. Mitigation, you 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 must cause a problem, how you don't mitigate it. Well, downward facing light, even things like. Well, I know, but if that's in the code. Then there's nothing to mitigate. You know what I mean? There's no error, there's no harm, because you've already, the code says you've got to have down facing lights. But I would suggest that one of these policies might lead to creating. I don't even know if we have a code that says that, but one of these policies might lead to creating a code that says. Only have downward facing lights, right?
We have, we have a development standards for all uses that limits.
Yeah.
Noise, I don't know about them.
I mean, there are general, could talk about this, add in. Too many times I don't want to talk about, there is a generic noise origins.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, probably not written correctly, technically speaking. I don't think, because there's a code currently existent that exists that. Feels with like noise that would be useful. No, I agree, not so there. So. So the policy is mitigate impacts like light, that's going to create codes that say. At least maybe in certain circumstances, depending on. The 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 zone that it's in, like the use, that there's going to be some design standards online. Right, so the policy should be develop design standards so that. Issues such as likely or so forth are are. Not mitigation, yeah. Well, you can say develop design standards to mitigate. Impacts of light, noise, et cetera, among surrounding properties. I I. To prevent impacts. For men. I mean, any, we don't have a building department, do we have designs? You put it in a condition, put it in a condition. So if you have a parking lot, it will have next space, it will have used that the other.
I don't think you're ever gonna develop enough standards to eliminate the impact from one property to the next, right? Even in a residential use. There were trees there before and now there's a house, now I hear kids and a dog and a chainsaw going out again, you're never gonna eliminate that impact when development happens. What you can do is mitigate it.
Doesn't say eliminate.
Right, that's what I'm getting to on the mitigation versus elimination of prevention.
Prevent is more of.
Right, if you want to prevent any impact ever happening, we deny everything that walks in my in the door of planning apartment. Right, you eliminate property rights and nobody can develop anything and no change law or happen. What you do is you mitigate those impacts, right?
EIS is saying potential mitigate potential impacts. So you've identified potential impacts, okay, if you put a light bulb, it can be clear, how you know we look at. So that's. Mitigating the potential. Well, I think maybe you need to have a policy that deals with. Use adverse factors or impacts. Now we have. They are potential effects. So could we add maybe something to? To the policy three? This is the very end. While protecting environment and mitigating potential impacts. To the surrounding area. And I don't know, if we've got it in the. Goal. Yeah. To mitigate the full list of. Now, we have the, alright, I had suggested moving it. You want to move the fullest below, but then you can put it in every one of those policies. Yeah, or we're going to create a generic policy. I I would say. I would, I just suggest a moving. Move it as is. In their policy, okay.
So I I copied the what was number four and changed it to mitigate the potential impact of economic economic development activities that cause adverse factors. Such as noise like it like layer or odor fumes and vibrations on surrounding community, yeah. Is that, is that where you guys were? We can work with that some market life, we got caught. You had a couple of different.
And then I also suggest moving five into a policy. It's obviously is. It's just an aspect of goal number one, which is.
We moved that one? All policies. Four, six, four, five.
Then my little six down to the policy two.
So I have that one reading, support local businesses by enacting development. Uh workforce housing proximity to commercial, industrial, agriculture and recreational uses.
By enabling development of?
Oh, yes, by enable. We don't have a recreational use table, we do have a commercial, industrial and agriculture, so. The adding recreation is a little bit of an outlier, but I think I understand what Mr. Song said and saying why. That's. Did.
Right, we resold the property just so they can put workforce housing on it. When if we had allowed it in the recreational zone, I don't think they would have done that. Alright, so. We've been a while. Yeah. There always be anything else that we want to add to the economic development? Well, section of the. I I wasn't at the meeting, but it was a couple meetings ago. And I forget the gentleman's name or even the organization he was associated with, but somebody came in and made some very interesting comments about economic development and how he had had to. He had been unsuccessful at bringing in some number of. Uh manufacturers that were looking for sites and the reason was he couldn't find. Market, he wanted fifty acres or larger, see, with the right language designation, then I would assume they'd have to have access to. Participation articles and. Probably urban services and whatnot. I mean, it's a very interesting discussion. It was interesting, uh. I'm not sure what we could do about it. We're talking about, we're talking about that, I wonder if you're dealing with a map. And he was talking about fifty to a hundred acres. When you have the unicorn, yeah. Well, I I haven't spent any time looking at the map. I could imagine places along ninety-five and two hundred that. My source of that. Yeah. Yeah. It's all dependent, you have to find a. Current landmark. Right, and I think I asked him. Have the perspective. Businesses. Looked at areas in the county along those arteries, he pretty much said no. Why? Well, because. Flexibility and so forth. I mean. Most producers themselves wanted to have availability of a railstone. So. You don't have a good one, but then some of these. No, it really is a. Highway two. That site up at Sanders, Gold Millsack, that's it, or up there at Colburn, that's it. Colburn is there as an industrial park. But. Moving a bit, that's the way. Where in the place?
But to your point, is this another example of an outside organization that we might want to have some regular dialogue? Captured here. I mean, they're they're, they were. Their government agency was.
Water County, Water County Economic Council. Brett Baker. Okay, anything else? We go in development? Natural resources, I had a lot of changes. But they're not. They will live here. They're on the road. And they're gone, made some edits. On the.
Got a different folder?
It should, no, right there, see where it says. Go back to implementation twenty twenty five, that folder in the top one of the PDF information component, BB edits. Further in there too. Yeah. So my ideas, I went back to review the natural resources. And I I took some language out of their wholesale. I'm sure, why the why it's not showing up? No.
This is in the PDF file.
Yeah.
I I have yours here, I can pull it up, can you say?
Is it in the drive?
It is.
Or is it?
Um it's under. It's under the implementation component, there's one that says edits for four, one, twenty five workshop. And then you guys have highlighted a bunch of stuff here. Which are their uh complaint components.
Yeah.
And then it's just the one PDF in that. There's a bunch of folders, like five folders, and then there's one that's just a PDF. This is edits for one, four, one, twenty five.
Oh, there it is, yeah, so there's under the head, under the tab. And it's for four.
I think that's as big as I can, I might go zoom in as well. This is Fox.
So you said, oh, okay, so this included mine as well.
Correct.
I only see comments from Dawn, that. For policies four and five. Okay, so. One of the comments I had, like, I'm passing over four. Well, I guess before we do that, we can go aside whether. Any of these objectives are. Well, goal number two reads like a policy. Not a, that's a, that's a. Number two. But first of all. If it's needed as policy, I'm not convinced, doesn't stay there, let's see if it's policy, but. When you combine goals and objectives, if this part can simply have then five. Goals and objectives? Or did we appropriate? Yeah, but we have addresses, this is a body I saw this, this chapter of the. Well, but no, there is a, there is a version. That's took out. Where we just did combine the five into goals. I did, I'm looking now and then. That's in, that would have been post four or one, that'll. Yeah. After when this. Okay, yes, there are five. And the one where we revised and had goals and objectives, there are five goals and objectives, they didn't change. Right? So. Substance change. My comment was objectives, at that time objectives, one and two, which would be goal policy one and two. I simply state, I don't know that they're. They're not really stating the whole. And the second part of the test. No, objectives to objective, what used to be impacted, so that'd be three and four. Yeah. The second, the second clause there is a. I would argue is a goal, strive to preserve public quality, quality of water resources. That's the goal part of the. And and it's similar with all three of those. Well, now. With the exception of the acknowledgement of consideration. Put that to a policy, one, two, keep it. But I think the others are. Comment was that second comment. The moment itself, go back and look at it, which I did to deliver the objectives. There's no presentation of these policies. There's nothing in the document that talks about. You know, the lead into these policies. You know, the lead into these policies. You know, we go back to what the. Component language.
Yeah, dude.
You define any. You got any songs in there? That will be these policies. Yeah. There. Yeah, I mean, okay, so if you go down to. Yeah, we talked about that. There was there was. I'm not sure what we're talking about. We talked about water expansion. Definitely talked about best management practices and a lot of the same practice. Um. And then we talked about pretty good law like habitat. And what I would suggest there is that, you know. Yeah, very clear in the language of the of the component itself. That even though, you know. We recognize the political law and habitat. Doesn't. Does not. Those definitions amount of that final lineup. I don't wish to say that. Yeah. What number it is, or number four. I would have that. Under five, I I wanted to really expand number five. If you go over to the comment that I made. Which we actually discussed these policies in a. And we actually researched. Uh we're. This is directly, it's directly out. Use a combination of two projects, maybe eight, impact and service water, manage management. Not the law, we talk about lake assist. Issue, I mean, that 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 complication. And so kind of the full met. Showline development, managed regulations. But I would suggest. Either making. Several several policy statements, I think number five. Maybe two. Incorporate the language just right out of the file. Cool, have that. Then I didn't need to do this, but um. With regard to weapons. We have a pretty extensive discussion in weapons of the component. And I thought we should add a policy. Which is which is right out of the component. And as the standard of county jurisdiction and consistent with the Clean Water Act. The linear weapons should be protected. It's right out of the. So we're gonna let them read that up there. Right? Consistent with the Clean Water Act. And the jurisdiction.
Yep.
Wasn't the. What were the additions that I suggested? And we did right out of. No, Don's gonna ask who we're under the board and does that say? I think the reason I said it wasn't because. The whole thing, Lu- Luca says. Give all these components. As they're as they retire land use regulation. So citing lake assist. Just talking is, that's again, that's that's like saying. We need to consider having a um. Land use conservation placement on your. On your problem. You can't apply them. You can't require them to go to Lake Assist and enter the program. So there's a lot of good stuff in there. Oh, it is wonderful. Wonderful stuff. Again, it says. As as it as. Right in sixty five oh two. And then again, it's sixty five oh eight. It says, as regards. We're getting labeled, but as regards land use regulation. Well, that's why you develop the components. Perhaps you can stay in there.
Uh also. It also says that it's supposed to involve all subject policies.
Right, in regards with respect to land use regulation.
Well, this this has to do with.
Hey, if I don't mistake, we got him and put that put that lake assist and uh. In in our appendix, is that correct?
For the natural resources, but I can pull it up the line.
I think we did. You can probably say, you know, for for a list of best management practices you may consider when. Appendix, whatever it is, because I I see what Don's saying. Yeah, I mean, land regulation, you must, shall. I went to two hundred dollars. He'll spend two hundred dollars. For all the development stuff, yes. That brings up a whole big topic because that's another thing that. The county that pledged to do is to update. The shoreline protection um part of the code. Because it's a holes in it. So.
Well.
So it's there's two two approaches. The two approaches are. Educational approach. With shoreline development, our best practices to reduce impacts of surface water. And then the reference is just to lake assist. Right, we could say, for example.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. The first approach. The implement program of educating owners.
What?
You're gonna codify that? You're gonna show that you've gone to. No, 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 you're missing my point. The whole direction on Lupa is. As it pertains to land use regulation, not the wishes of the world to have, you know, we're looking at the moon on Thursday. Has a wonderful goal, but it's nothing to do with land use.
This is.
Best management practices to reduce the impacts.
The surface water.
Okay, but that's land use.
Yeah, are you gonna are you gonna codify? How are you gonna codify that?
Well, what we said, when we thought, when we put that in the component. What we said we would do. Is when somebody comes in. To request the BLP for a shoreline parcel, we would hand them a copy of that or send them a link. Your copy of that and say, here's a list of best practices you may want to consider.
And but I I still don't know if you should be in our policy.
Yeah, I just. I don't think it falls short of the basic test. To write a policy, because if you write a policy, then somebody's gonna say. Look at that. There's many policies. Where are you falling? How are you falling there? And if it's not. They're gonna take it as far up the ladder as they can because it's written in a policy. You're supposed to do it. But once of course, I'm sorry, water county, how does this regard land use regulation?
So this is what the natural resources component says. The county should establish a policy of doing the following as a means of educating shoreline property owners. About ways they can minimize their impact on surface water, provide a copy of the Lake Assist handbook. Um make a link available on the planning by website. But it's telling us to build a policy to do these to you.
Yeah.
I don't I don't. It doesn't look like the Lake Assist uh handbook is referenced outside of. It's not added in the appendix. It's just referenced throughout this component.
But what I what my component, which is already been approved, says we should do a policy, then I think we should do a policy. That's why.
Yeah.
All those things. You want if you wanna if you want to uh. You know, eliminate the reference to Lake Assist. Now.
Well, one of the things this we should, if we're gonna write a policy here, it should be specific and it should. Crack what we said in the component.
This this is actually right out of the.
Well, but we 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 went a step further. We said we're gonna do two things. We're gonna. Hand people who own. Who come in. For the LP on a shoreline parcel, we're gonna hand them a copy. And provide a link on the website. We didn't say. We're gonna create some broad general program to educate the public about best management practices for waterfront properties. Somebody could take that and run with it and say, well, you need to.
Yeah, where is?
We said we're gonna do two things. Or it's the goal of educating the public. We're gonna put a link on the website and when people come in for the shoreline. A land use application for a shoreline parcel, we're gonna hand them a copy of that. And the discussion we had at the time was I thought that most of the stuff and most people. Will be interested in. I mean, these things aren't necessarily terribly dangerous things to do, and many people would be interested in doing that to protect the length of the river that you're moving on. So. And a lot of them are enforceable. It'd be trying to codify them anyway.
Yes. What's this? What's it saying?
It doesn't say.
I say. Doesn't say that we should mitigate the impact to surface water by. Codifying lake assist. Pretty much saying that.
Right.
You could be. About best management practice.
Yeah, so what I'm what I'm suggesting is. Educating people about best management practices is was more general than. Hand people who come in with a a land use application, a copy of this document, and put a link on the website. That's very specific. That's what the policy should say. That's what the component said. So those are the two things we said we were gonna make a policy for. But whereas educating the public could be construed to be a much broader, much more general thing, and then I think that does leave us open for what Don is suggesting. If somebody come in and say, well, you said you were gonna educate the public, and why aren't you educating the public about it? You're not doing, you know, you could be doing this, that, and the other thing. No, what we said is two things. We're gonna hand hand the shoreline people a. A copy of this document, and we're gonna put a link on our website. Period over now. That's the extent of our. Our commitment to educate the public about the specific issue.
And, you know, and like you mentioned earlier, maybe take it over Lake Assist, because they have some specific group. And they may.
Is that not the name of the document?
Well, both. But it's the document. Program of the boner. Soil and water conservation. Right? So this this is not. This I didn't regraft this.
No.
This is a copy and paste. They could have said. The lakes commission. The lakes commission.
But for what Jake's just read to us a moment ago, we we actually said. We're gonna create two very specific policies.
And these are those. That's a that's a copy and paste of the component.
But it's somewhere else in the component. It's before we said, before we reduced it to the statements that we're gonna establish a policy. Of distributing this document to shoreline property owners. And I think when we talk about it, my recollection is when they come in with a. A land use application. And we're gonna put a link on the website. Again, that's very specific and it's very limited. It doesn't imply that we're gonna hold annual seminars about best practices for shoreline management, for example. Somebody will come along and argue that she did.
Yeah.
And and I kind of agree that. Man, I understand Don what you're saying in terms of this is all supposed to be related to land use regulation, but. It seems like it's pretty directly related. If you say somebody comes in who owns a shoreline property and they come in with a land use application and one of our policies is. Here is a document that describes best practices for shoreline development. Take a look at it. Or in or within the round file, whatever you like to do. Here it is. That's our policy. I know, by the way, if you'd like it, there is a link to it. You wanna. Look on it. I'll look at it online. Nobody can construe that we haven't done, yet we said we're gonna do. We write a policy, but since that's what we're gonna do. And then you go do it.
Okay, so we could say. The first. Your reference. Did you read what the? What we said again? So are you guys actually getting out Lake Assist's guidebook?
I don't know off the top of my head now. I don't know what if code if a code requires it today, we do, and if it doesn't or anything else. I know, like. For short term rental, there's something about the. The voter's guidebook.
Oh.
Voting regulations. I know that one specific. I don't know.
Yeah.
So number seven is a concise statement of what we said our policy was going to be, I think.
The only thing I changed is instead of Bonner County, that county should.
Yeah.
Um and then. I spelled out building location permit. Um you could probably add the county should also make the link.
There's nothing about it.
So this this I pulled from Alan's comment, number six there. That's what you guys have been debating.
Okay.
So how would you like to modify that?
The seven already covered.
They. I think it does. It says. We wrote in the in the natural resources component that we were gonna create a policy. That says what number seven says. That's what we said.
So we need to have six.
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's the springboard is in the component, and here's the policy that the springboard said. Okay.
And then I mean, even we need to edit seven way it's sitting up here right now.
Yeah.
Implement and codify shoreline development. County, the county should. I'll be saying that. I think they're they're really actually to give offense because. Actual code. The other one is more of a. On shoreline property. Back to different changes. Well, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna. What's this on keeping that in there?
Well, not.
That's the one you guys have debated. That link.
It also started with surface water and then went into now that's gone. I mean, basically, the best management practices deal with landscape, that kind of stuff.
Right?
Uh which is important. And here in shoreline property.
And some of it at least is unenforceable. Right? We talked about not over fertilizing your lawn, for example. You're not gonna be able to enforce that. But good idea to educate people and say.
He's the best.
Right.
Right. Requirement that's in the code is. For the books, etc.
Right?
And.
But that's part of seven. Right, since seven, I think. That's and seven should probably read the county should implement cod by shoreline development land use regulations that address those areas for the county can enforce regulations effectively. Like the setback, like I said. Right, right?
That still doesn't deal with. Do we do we? Do we care about informing?
But I think that's what six that six is now says that, right? Six is now pretty much a copy of what we wrote in the component, in this component.
Okay.
Right, so that's.
So. Yeah, it still doesn't. As mentioned from the floor. It doesn't say anything about. Protecting groundwater. It did.
Yeah, I'll I'll copy that back over. This is. It's asking you because if you wanna. Keep any portion of this or believe it. So this is what um. Alan had in his comment. I think we already have that one, right?
Under six now.
Address that.
In a policy?
So. That's what shoreline properties are addressing is surface water qualities. We need to say that explicitly. Okay. But that isn't anywhere in number six right now.
But what about groundwater? We talked about groundwater in the opponent. As a natural resource, but.
There's nothing in the policies. And I don't know, again, that the, that the. The law directed a policy for problem.
What is it? Also, they're not having. Now, I think in the component that, you know, groundwater. Yes.
I think everything that PHC does is protecting groundwater.
Yeah, you can take groundwater from, from pollution, but you can also, I guess the other part of it is. I don't know. Supply.
Supply. But then I go back to, we had a long discussion about this. I don't think there's anybody who can tell us how much supply there is of groundwater.
I think that's why there is no policy.
If there's a giant aquifer under the ground, yeah, they can measure those things and they can give you good, if they understand how they're recharged, they can give you a good idea. But the way most of us get water in Bonner County, I don't think they can tell us how much water. If they could, I, again, I'll say it again. I wish they could, but I don't think IDWR is equipped to tell us that.
Yeah.
So what would I'm saying? What would you say about groundwater? Number one, we're never gonna regulate it to say you must prove that you can get adequate water. How, how you do that?
Well, I, I state it's the responsibility to IDWR and not.
And they. They just say, okay, you have a permit to drill well, you get what you get, but. And if it's insufficient or it's lost quality, sorry, it's no good. But you can't prove ahead of time that you've got adequate water and supply.
Right. And you, and and as a, as a residential user, I think you get a certain number of. Certain amount of water as a. Point, or if it's there, it's there, you get it.
Yeah.
There's a.
That's your water, right?
Right.
That's just being a water. So when you have the case, you, you apply for it. Is it surface water? Is it groundwater? Right? You have to adopt them, right?
I'm not sure there's anything we could say about policy and I value sources on.
So scrap that.
I agree, other than, I think it would be redundant because again. Everything that Cannon will help those forests has done basically to protect groundwater.
Theoretically, if there's a groundwater issue, I would think that IDWR would have something to say on.
Well, if, if it becomes known that there's a supply issue.
Yeah, right.
And, and that kind of goes back to, that kind of goes back to. What we're talking about earlier, edges. And we're gonna get some input from IDWR and.
And, and we did. We had to sit down with T. That's the question.
No. I think so. Seven.
Yeah, six, six here should be, I think six should be removed.
Yeah, no, I thought we, that we.
Essentially replaced with seven.
With seven. And they. Jake stood up on the board asking the question. Do we have a rule number six?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? On this?
I, I had a question about this when I read it and I did a little bit of research, sort of satisfied myself because. Are people gonna know what we mean when we say watershed standards should be employed? Inland use codes to protect water quality?
Not necessarily.
I wasn't sure I knew what that meant when I read it this afternoon.
All right, and you're in. Policy, one policy and. Water resource?
Yeah.
And who has such standards?
Yeah, do we? That'd be a good question. Do we? I, I, first thing I need is, well, watershed standards, okay. They're standards based on an individual's specific watershed, I think, as best as I can determine. Are we gonna establish unique standards for the different watersheds of Bonner County?
What does that mean? Every creek, every, every. Moving body of water has a watershed. But yeah, like Sam Point has a watershed. A protected watershed for its water, public water, drinking water source. That's gotta stand. I don't know of any standards that apply to the rest of it. Just a natural. The creek comes out past my house. I know the watershed and so I don't know of any standards for that.
Well, that would raise another question at what level? Right? Because I think at a high level, then we're talking about a relatively small number of watersheds encompassed the company, the country, the county, but that's at a very high level. We're talking about Priest River.
Well, we got Clark Ford. We got one watershed. It's pondered. High court pondering, that is the watershed, and it's huge.
Well, I think they, I think they did, they defined.
It's part of. Part overall. How micro you wanna get.
Right, exactly. That's my, that's my point. Do you go down to every creek or, or?
Well, I think, I think basically what I think we were trying to get across here is that. Shouldn't be. The watershed.
Well, that, well, that's, again, that's hugely broad.
It is, of course it is. But I think that's what, that's what we're trying to get at. I'm not sure what we had in mind, just a watershed standard.
Yeah, I, I'm a little bit concerned that this may. Drive us to having to, having to create unique standards for. At least at some level of detail, each watershed in the county.
I had a very interesting conversation back when I was with IDB. I think I would say in front of you. Up through the Coca-Cola drainage. For all the properties, Blacklins and so forth on the west side. Their cows are taking naps in the creek, in the core of the creek. And doing other things. Um. And I, I argued with them. I said, you gotta get your cows out. So EPA stepped in and said, well, if this. Frontage row goes through there, then we're gonna fence off the creek. You can't do that. Good boy. The cow flaps in the vein. Yep. Oh, boy. So I, yeah, again, where, where are we going? So, okay. We all, yeah. EPA couldn't even muster up the strength to say you shall. So, if, if. Right, nowhere.
What's the team said?
Said.
I, I didn't remember.
We, we, we never mapped any watersheds. Um.
Yeah.
Well, we have a suggestion, what we. When one of these components is, um. Is adopted. It should become the current of the bottom. About the old. News. I don't think so.
Oh, in your guys' drive? Yeah, I can go back and remove those old ones. Yeah, yeah. On the website, I put those as adopted and current, but I noticed that the other day and I. All these old ones, I just left them in as current. It's the previous now, so.
Recent, recent pass.
Mm-hmm. What I'll do is probably. Combine all those into one, put them on its own thing and delete them all.
And, and. They all have a date of adoption. A lot of them were two thousand five, and then there's thirteen and fourteen and fifteen and so, and so forth. So even just. Compliment component, two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
So.
So just to be clear, it's the watershed standards part of this statement that concerns me. Um. I, I don't have a problem with saying, you know, we should have land use codes to protect water. That's also a pretty broad statement, however, but. Yeah. It, it was the watershed standards part of it that raised a bell in my mind. What does it mean? How we even done that? At what level of detail? The more I think about it, the. More complex it could get. Um.
So you're saying, I'm just going back to the component. You say that component. Land use applications in Bonner County are reviewed by the Light and Forest Department of Water Resources. For the purpose of regulating water and quality of quantity. That's it.
No.
But do they, do we have any discussion with them about watershed standards?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about watershed. I'm just.
But.
Going back to what we're.
Right. Man, I'm talking about what regards to the land use.
But, but, but how does, a-again, it's important to understand how IDWR deals with that whole water rights issue. It's kind of. To some extent, path to the back. Right? When they issue you a permit to drill a well, there's no guarantee that you're gonna hit water. They're not saying you're gonna, they're not guaranteeing you, yes, you can drill your well and you'll get water. They're just saying you can, you can drill a well and if you, you hit water, great. You have a fundamental water right to whatever the number is, you know, for, for household use. Uh, and you can develop for more if you've got. Agricultural use or. Additional uses beyond standard household waters. Um. And it's not until. Something happens and you impact. Somebody else's pre-existing water, right? That they step in and. I can communicate that.
So on the EPA website, there is a handbook for developing watershed plans to restore and protect our waters. If you apply into that. Three megabyte.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think we. I'm going back and give it a pull. We don't talk about it at all.
So it's roundless policy.
We're talking about. Water basis and watershed, so they'll say. In our standards.
Well, again, it's one thing to identify them. It's another thing to decide, you've done enough analysis. Of the differences and the unique characteristics of each of them to decide that we're gonna have specific land use regulations for different watersheds. Which I think is what, I think that's what number one says to me.
I agree. Quickly, this brings to mind. One, one of the meetings we had, somebody, somebody said, well. You need to look at the, at the, uh, Lake Tahoe, um. Program that they have down there, which is all about the watershed and water quality of the watershed. And they did come up with regulations that to protect the water quality of lake by anything that's anything the watershed. And they, they discounted certain areas, so what they're forested and just forest practices, but. Developable land in there has water quality standards imposed. And it's all credits and so, it's very complex. But they did it, but they did the super analysis, forest services, the super analysis of the watershed, all the buildings, so forth, and what they mean. We have done. I was gonna bring that up at the time, and I think.
There's no way. Well, you, you, you need to this, you have to go into. Seven. Oh, seven.
But the other aspect.
Temperature.
Yeah, I mean, I recall very clearly. From when D K P was talking about this, that most of the flutes in Ponteray actually go from. Declining.
Court to line, they were coming down.
Yeah, so. Talking to the money, and we have no recall over that.
So let's, let's eliminate this here. Goodbye. Okay, anything else?
Want to move on to hazardous areas?
This way. If we get a response. I. Was sure. I still can't find. Now. What do you want? That, oh, that's comments. Oh, I think, I think you have to go back. Through the top. It is for four one twenty-five workshop. Okay, hazardous, hazardous areas.
Thank you.
You made some comments there.
So hazardous areas, that. Certainly sounds like how ninety-five north. All right.
That was boundary, that was boundary.
Yeah. That's horrible.
Just past, just past, uh. The top of the hill. How was that crashed? I, I, well, again, I dodged. Um. I'm not looking at the same thing we are.
Well, this is where your comment is.
Yeah, it makes a lot of pain. I, I know, I. I, I know. Would you, did you provide the goals and objectives of this one?
Under.
There, there is a version where you do that, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And then Steve proposed, I'll be.
Yeah, I went through and combined goals and objectives and all of these, something that.
I go for fifteen.
I, I thought, but the old objective would probably is your number three. Four and five.
Right.
Could all be false, I agree.
That's future development should and development within areas.
And the one that starts with Bonner County.
Oh, that one too?
I'll, I'll tag that.
Cause he has a version where he's.
Okay, okay.
So.
Policy. Should that's wrong. Should we discuss? Policy.
So.
Uh, on the one, I, I went, but I don't know what number it is on yours, but. But when I said multiple points of interest and aggression should be considered for large developments, committed, but I would add mitigate danger from law and fires.
So you want those for, cause who cares?
We are moving those other three to goals and object, or to policies.
Those three original objectives.
We have to change this to number six.
Yeah, so I was saying. You know. The reason we do that is mitigate the nature of wildlife fires.
Yeah, so I think, I think six and nine are redundant. And I like nine better. Under this.
New agenda Jake is working on.
Okay.
I don't like the word large. And six. Yes.
So what is considered a large development?
That's the old argument, what's large?
Well, that's why I like nine. It takes.
I agree.
Okay.
Hi. I heard you do some. That's just across the board.
Yeah, I agree.
Great.
All right. Um, this, maybe just a question for everybody, just. Does everybody read emergency and escape routes as multiple routes? Cause to me, that's the key. Right? Really is multiple routes. So once.
Why we say that? Well.
Multiple.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that edit too.
You want several or multiple?
Multiple is fine. This multiple includes two, and to me, several is three or more. That's just the way I. And two is enough in many cases, depending on the scale of the level of two is enough.
Would you eliminate urgency and escape to say multiple routes?
I'm okay with that. Yeah. Multiple routes is.
Multiple what?
Interest.
Interest.
Yeah.
Interest and deference.
Yeah, yeah.
And be, well, ingress you want.
You need the fire guys still to get in.
And then, yeah.
Right, at the same time, which is often the challenge, at the same time.
Exactly. And then number six and number nine. redundancy there, isn't this a, which ones are six and nine? I think six probably deleted given number nine.
Definitely. Oh. I'm scared of sword.
Yeah.
Right, I think that's. We can.
Okay. Okay. Did we, in the, in the last three, did we strike the woo?
No, it's still up there as number four on the board.
Yeah.
I mean, even, even last night at the partnership meeting, he talked about wildland fires, wildland fires. I don't know that any of the districts are really sticking with the term wildland urban interface. That implies just that. Here's urban area, here's the wildland area. Well, out in the county, we don't have such.
Of Monday.
It's all, it's all, it's, it's no, it's all, it's all wild. There is no interface.
It's interface.
Well, the fire service views it, I mean, it's, I know, it's a term that they just use generically, yeah. But it's purely. Uh, it's a misnomer. There are places where, I mean, they've got it on a line. Here's the woo. Because it's a pure distinction. We got trees to supplement here, now we got urban development here, and it's an absolute line. We don't have that. It'd be a real sporadic line if there wasn't.
Well, if wherever you have homes, but surround, well, that's what I mean. So, you know, the, the chief from, from West Bonner County said, I consider the entire unincorporated county wildland. Because of it. There is no interface. And that, that took the term unless I. It challenged into my coffin. A challenge to my coffin.
It is very different than other areas, I mean, if you, think about. Where I used to live. In California, they have very clear. Wildland urban interfaces, giant housing development on. Ten thousand acre lots and it backs right up to, you know.
Lots of group.
Yep. hundreds of acres of group.
And there was a session about that in the Paradise Fires, too.
Right.
Uh, because of the density that was allowed to develop. And also that big, big raging fire at the B C about ten, twelve years ago, that was the same thing, it was just. Here's the river, and up the top was six thousand square foot lots. Hundreds of them. So.
Well, you know, we, we use, we use the term urban. Urban generally means. And that was my other concern. Now, we're putting a word in here to say. We still kind of use the, even though we're trying to correct it, because. They classification of urban. Urban services are urban. Developmenters, there is no.
It does now. It does under census. Does stand for a statistical area, combined statistical area. Standpoint that will operate good. Okay. And parts of single, that's why we went through that exercise about what's transportation wise, what's our service area? And parts of same. Right over there.
Giving this in here since it's used.
And it was a, it's fine. I won't ever, angle or dial for sure. Do we, does the county indeed have policies and plans for fire, um, urban, wildland?
Yes.
We do. Here is a. Fire management plan that emergency manager has. Along with fire district, uh, card ones, I think four shows, so there is. Right, Dave?
I, that's one of my favorite. So, so when we're using that, that word development, all three of those. New development. Are we talking about a single structure, including a single structure, are we talking about?
That's a good question, because that's used somewhat subjectively throughout various codes or policies, it's. Sometimes we consider development, um, of building up a structure, other times we consider it, um. Rezoning, sometimes it's also considered, you know, spreading of land, so. What do we consider development, all of that, I mean, maybe that's the right answer.
Can't have the new cow bar, that one actually.
Okay, so are we done with hazardous areas? The whole other than number seven.
Well, it's not just there.
Large.
And I think it's maybe different.
I mean, up there, number two, specified, there's an industrial commercial for industrial development. Then. Other place.
If you, if you think about seven for a moment. The critical. Development phase is when you're doing land divisions. I would. Suggest, or. Yell. Well, but by the time you have a B L P, you have a parcel, you have roads.
Yeah.
They are what they are. Are, are we gonna, are we gonna be in a position to deny a B L P because we're gonna say you don't have. Multiple roots of ingress egress, you have to build more roads into your parcel before you can build a home.
Yeah, there's so.
I don't think we're gonna do that.
I know, I have so many parcels.
So much, so willing to go that way.
That's why I'm suggesting it's more at the time when you're creating lots, to make sure that they all have multiple ingress egress.
And, and that's the other caveat, you know, a lot of these policy things. Typically in code, it says. Like, what I kind of quote, after such and such nineteen eighty five, if you take down after that fault, I mean, there's part of that, no. Is a sunset or whatever. So I don't know whether that needs to be the caveat over all this stuff, at this point forward, these policies apply. To. At this point, to land, land divisions created after. On the other hand, it's the same. Particularly outlands.
Um, I don't think. Would we issue a B L P to somebody who wanted to build a house in there?
I would hope not. Well, so. So Chad was the one that wrote the, the component. And he did a very extensive, uh, land use analysis of slopes. All of them, and I don't. I have to look back at the policy or the component now to see. And see where they were, they're all in places where, no, because I suppose somebody could come in and say, I want to put a house there.
But with the excessive slopes, we require a geotechnology, and instead of. They're able to, they're able to meet whatever those requirements turn out to be, they can build there.
So, like I said, we should, does that override the avoided? Uh, you know, you provide engineer analysis that, oh, your housing could get swept away. And I will answer because the engineer said it's still like Fort Knox, or like somebody in Radio Tower Bay, so I know.
Anyway, my point was eight reads more to me like something you would. Maybe evaluate that D L P time. Seven more like a land division. Six is a bit of a mix, because we talked about regulating density. So, and that's. On plan, so we, we think. Land division time. So that, and I guess, isn't there, you've said many times, Matt, you've educated us that there's a process you can go through to get permanent. Bill.
On the slopes or stuff?
No, in the, in the left plane.
Oh, yeah. You bet.
Cost money. We're, we're gonna discourage it, but I don't think we can say.
Like, yeah, Jason was there that night, like he said, originally, we were gonna have a pro div. And then we brought that up and raised and checked on, he said, right, you cannot.
Right.
You're discouraged, policy, I think the size of policy is being built.
So, like, can we test a regular location test to do it, so if you have, a guy has a twenty acre piece, and he must have split into two tens. Uh, there's a level one way in and out. Is, is this going to stop him from splitting his twenty acre piece into two tens?
Uh, one of the questions I would ask is, what, what are the, what are the characteristics of his one way in and out? Cause he's, he's only got two parcels, it's a very limited number of traffic. Amount of traffic that could potentially be generated, the key thing for me there, be interested, this gentleman's comment is. Be able to get the fire trucks in at the same time the residents are getting out. But you're not gonna have hundreds of cars trying to get out of there, you're gonna have few cars trying to get out, and fire trucks trying to get in. Is the road wide enough to accommodate that?
It's probably not a realistic situation.
Yeah.
That they would have to pass each other.
Yeah.
On two partial.
Yeah. Then there's always the scenario where the burning tree falls down across the one road.
I saw that episode last year. Chainsaw. Carrying chainsaw.
Fire apparatus all carried.
Oh, of course, I'm sure, children, northern lights and this, and you've got to.
I even got one of my razor.
There you go.
My music.
By the way, the county does have. Is the, uh.
Water County Rural Development and Fire Protection and Resource Center.
And addresses the wildland urban.
To me, I think these policies are fine.
Even with the question about what's development, that, that's what started this.
Yeah. Someone's gonna claim, well, that's V L P time. Someone else might claim, well, that's when you split the land into two or four or wherever. Um, it might be when you ask for a resource. I, cause I, I've heard that argument, all of them. For years.
But what should have been? Seems to me that minimum, should you have a B L P time?
Sure.
Well, in some cases, realistically, I think it has to happen before that, or. To create some. Unpalatable situations, so, and I'm thinking about the multiple ingress egress rooms. You know, there's, there's buildable, there's buildable problem, I think about where I live, did I know, like, you, you go further out. The street I live on, and there's buildable lots out there, but there's only one way in and out. You're not. Even, even. You know. Once you go past Baldway Road. And say, at that intersection, everything to the east of there, one way, one way out. There's a little lot of properties up there, past that intersection, they'll all have to come down Sable Road to get out.
That's true, all of them.
Yeah. Or you're gonna tell all those people when they come in for a V L P, ah, so pretty scary. You're only one way. Yeah.
Especially center.
Right.
Well, right. Yeah.
What you get down, what you get down. Otherwise, you have the roads up into us. Back roads.
So, that's why I think seven is primarily. About land division time, zoning time. When you're, when you're considering ensuring there's multiple, when you're creating those locks, ensuring that they all have multiple ingress, egress. Points.
That's a little bit like your watershed issue, how granular are you gonna get with that?
Yes.
Talking about out of the whole peninsula, or out of your development?
Right. Right. And. I don't know. I don't have a good solution.
No, just making a point.
Yeah. On the other hand, like I said, eight, and to a large extent, six, seeing the more. If six is a mix, just because we bring in the density issue, but. They're a little bit more at the old time than mine. Eight, eight especially, is, is to me. I, I mean, I.
So what would you suggest? Land division?
Yeah. So seven, you're saying land division should be designed to reduce exposure to well and etc.
I don't know. Same with eight.
What eight, again, eight to me is more about the old time, guy, I, do, do I care if somebody does a land division and creates a lot that's. All excessive slope? You know, it's a bad idea, but if some private property owner wants to do that. And he creates a lot that's very difficult to build on, and somebody comes along later, wants to build on it, he has to spend all the money to do a geotech analysis and. Effects the cost of building his home, okay, you know, I'm not gonna, I. I wouldn't do it, but I'm not gonna tell somebody they can't do that.
So you're, you're, you're telling.
Yeah, well, it, we, this is, it's really the definition of development is what is raising these questions, and in that case, I think development should be. A B L P. Makes sense. Right?
And then that's, is B L P actually in title.
Okay, so then it should, I guess you want some.
Yeah. And how do you discourage them, because you have to go through all.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not, sorry.
Technical, how is it, how are they discouraged, because you have to go through all this.
Development. Location prevents. Within, that's an eight. And then seven.
Land divisions. Or just take out future, just say land divisions.
Just, just so, in my feeling, like I said. You have a gap there, that's on that one way out, pasture has a twenty acre piece over. Hands. And he wants to split into, I, I just don't want someone to come in and say, no, you can't do it, I'll be zoned for it because of that. But in this, they should be.
Yeah.
Here's where scale matters.
Exactly.
Right? So. I can always go back to where, where I live, what happened if somebody decided that there's a. I don't know how they get it, hundreds of acres of land sitting out there that someday may be developed out. Past Redondo, Sable Road, you'll hear probably, right? Um, I think it's currently pending, I think there are a lot of houses out there.
Well, it is. Beans that are on the property. The whole series of bridges, but there are. Flying in development. He probably.
Yeah, so resolve that one. Um, five and nine, I think there's redundancy there, maybe five can be deleted to it's at the same.
Ah, excessive blow.
I'm sorry, sorry, it's now eight, five, nine, back when I first thought.
Excessive smoke, yeah, I think we mentioned that. But.
Don't we want to be both about densities?
But just combine.
Combine them, yeah. They're just two different.
Combine those.
One is, is avoid them in these areas, the other is do this in these areas, so.
You want those as one big one like that?
They're both against the steam source, but then the ones that how to.
I'm okay with that, if they would do that.
I remember seven was just provide for multiple ingress egress routes for residents. Provide for adequate ingress, dress routes for residents as determined by the fire, fire industry.
Residents and emergency vehicles.
I wanted to say that before, just the residents. Well, you don't have to say who it's for, just provide.
Yeah, just provide. Yeah, there you go, it covers everybody.
Regardless.
U P S.
So what, so what Matt is suggesting is, instead of saying multiple, say adequate, and say as determined by the fire district. Yeah, let the fire district look at it, determine what's necessary, because. In some cases, somebody's saying we have two, that's enough, that satisfies the multiple requirement, the fire district might look at it and say, well. That number of homes, you need four. That amount of traffic that could be generated, and so you need six, right? Or you might have got it, and say, yeah, in that case, as long as the road is big enough that I can get my trucks in while the residents are trying to scaddle, that's okay.
What do you do for people who are outside of the fire district?
It's there.
Just a thought.
We, do we still have a fire marshal?
This is state. You can use the term authority having jurisdiction.
Sure. And then who would ever virtue?
Well.
In those.
Probably they'd all do this because it's government. There is no. Like sheriff, if I'm not mistaken, is not fire marshal. Uh, pretty sure.
Um, I, Mark Soder, back when I was on Sable Fire Mission, and we, and so. Mentioned, uh, Mark Soder was the, was the fire marshal.
I think that's been dropped.
Because I looked it up on the web yesterday, and all it said was state fire marshal, so and so, I never mentioned it again, local fire marshal.
I, I'm almost, I, I would be willing to bet five dollars. The sheriff in. The county sheriff is not fire marshal, oh, it's like, no. Pretty sure.
I thought that Spirit Lee Fire Chief just got promoted to fire marshal.
She got promoted to their office. Oh. He's handling the, the Green Northern County there.
Yeah, see, that's it, if they, if so divided.
But that's a, that's a state part of them, well, true, okay, but local fire marshal, well, I think. Pretty sure. I mean, it's a weird thing, it doesn't make sense, but that's. Pretty, there you go.
Well, we could say, you know, as determined by putting a fire to district or.
Fire.
If you say authority having jurisdiction.
Yeah. I feel a lot better on that, yeah.
I think that's accessible ways, because it could be less than, it could be more than.
Yeah.
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 Back to number four. I just, you just search a little bit, I don't think Water County has, has a policy. On wildland fire or W, it's W U I, not U W I, pretty clear. Um, the one I just cited, that's a grand suggestion that the fire chiefs came up with.
To use, um, um. Bonfire, yeah, and so forth, those are all programs that are addressed to homeowner, if they choose to to think it in, they're not policy. I I don't know, maybe a varied policy somewhere, uh, Bonner County will. Develop a policy or develop a program, maybe that's the policy, I I don't know.
Well, there's the all hazard mitigation plan, and it might be in there, I I don't know that.
There is a policy. There's a.
It's a plan.
I think it's because it says policies and plans. So maybe there's policy or if somebody's gonna search for policy and there isn't.
All right. We need this.
Yeah.
David, what should now do it?
All right, so what do you want to do, uh, if we we, uh? Except for land use, we have to go back to after we get some information from. Agency this. We have completed seven of the. Of these components. We have seven left. And that's public services. Transportation. Recreation. Special areas. Outing. Well, what's the will of the group you want? Back to another one or?
Simple one that we could look at such as.
In recreation. That's one. And short special areas. Special areas or recreation. Special areas is probably the two. Okay. We don't. There is. Nine is. Why don't these follow the sequence? The other components?
I can reorder, I don't, I don't know how they.
There's no, this is just what they were in the old.
Probably.
We just could be old song of him, providing. We've changed it.
Well, I don't have any suggestions on the special areas. Now, I officially set everybody the first objective of this. Think development, project, new site related policies.
It's on page seventeen on my draft, so around there. Yeah. And.
Airborne class. Three is short. So the relative straightforward.
So my comment was. The component says Bonner County planning shall affirm that no historic structures exist within those lands, land use areas of decision, sure, there's period of involvement. Certainly sounds like.
No historic structures. That was a. Generalized maps, no, because that's.
Okay, that's gold.
But future developments are aware of special areas of concern and connected with the sort of the site. Nobody presentation.
All right, well, it's a, but. In the components says shall affirm that no historic structures exist. That's more than to put them on that. What 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 does the rest of that sentence mean, within those land use areas of decision? That's what it says, the component, that's what we wrote. What what does it mean? I don't know.
You better figure it out.
Ah.
Are you talking about, are you talking about a specific land use application?
I I I think so.
That's the way I would interpret.
Land use areas of decision in conjunction with the land use action.
Right.
And so it gets. And it is, it's it's a spatially arranged thing, because there's even something there or not, it's not a. Not a policy or.
So this is one where it's easier to define where they are, right? We don't know that many.
Well, the other part, historic preservation says. You kind of keep historic sites somewhat secret, so they're not plundered, they're not, we talked with ship on. They're they're very, very stringent about them. You you just say, if you want to come in the back room, I'll show you. Or if you've got a site specific thing that you want to look at, I'll show you, but we're not going to advertise it publicly. So. Um, I I now I look at the language that's in the component, saying that they shall affirm. Means is that the staff has looked at it, and they will affirm, nope, there's no structure there, you're okay. And it's not involving anything.
And what if there isn't a historical structure on it?
Then you have to deal with ship oh, and and go through the roach and make sure that you're not affected in A B C D ways. According to the. According to what the historic thing is.
Right.
It can be pretty onerous. And and just know, just like.
Well, all right, so let's add that, add that as a as a policy.
Yep.
I think some of these kind of overwhelm.
Do we change the shall, the county should affirm the newest or old structures?
Yeah, 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 we soften it all the way through.
How about the objective? Well, I've been, since future development, you know, personally, my culture, my logic, since the science. I know, I think that's a what.
Yes. Then the follow up is, therefore, Bonner County shall should affirm that no historic structures or sites. Should say or sites as well.
Okay, so rather than objective, it should be a goal, I did some.
Yeah. Under goals. Which under the other thirty minutes it is. Okay. But so the the policy. It is a Blar County planning should affirm that no historic structures or sites exist within the areas of the land use application.
So does that mean, what's gonna trigger that every single, any kind of of a. Land use change, you're you're gonna have to go ahead and.
Maps, art, the map, I think the map is there, the generalized map of of known prehistoric and historic sites. It's difficult, because around here, the main source for checking any historic sites is the Calistola Coopie kind. So they know where their sites are. They'll come back, but we don't send them, they don't send refresh review to either client.
I don't believe so, I don't think so. And, you know, you see. Other than that, it's the private, uh, historical preservation people, uh, or state ship on. We don't send anything to state ship on, I'm really concerned about this development. So it's about my question, within a land use application. This can be triggered, you're gonna have to prove that you have no historical structure in your sites, you know, for any land use application there around. Is that what that reads? The intent is not to disturb them, but how do you get there? And I don't know that we address that in the component, other than that, just. The map, that was in the component, but then this statement about a shall affirm was in the component. Now, something has to raise the specter that there's a historic site there.
If if this was in code someplace, how would how would planning department?
Yeah.
Feel about this?
I would want a a map, so I'm thinking similar like the pipeline, right? So some things within so far of the. The Trans Canada Pipeline, we have to provide a notice or some some additional standard perceived statute. So to me, I'd want a map with these historic areas, and then have a layer in G I S so that the planners could look at that and say, oh, this is close to or within this. Overlay or this area of, you know, with some protection on it.
And so this this map can be produced by. Well, like it says, in that policy number one, basically Historical Society, Bonner County Historical Society, and others in the county. And the Native American tribes for appropriate preservation, so it's it's the map gets put together by them. With them. Whatever.
Okay.
And then the staff has to, somebody has to go and check it against the map.
Yeah.
Oh, by the way, Mr. Preppalman, you're, looks like you're close to that, so then what?
Right, yeah, the other way to do this would be to add them to our distribution of landings files, but then they're gonna get every single landings file, I think it'd be a better exercise is to.
Who's every land use application?
Well, that would be on us to review the map that we create with those entities.
A staff function.
The staff function.
That's the direction in the policy is to create a generalized map. And then that's no different, I think it's not gonna be. Can't imagine that's gonna be all that words. No, and again, going to.
Bonner County Historical Society.
Tribes. Historical society has pretty good idea where that stuff is, if it exists, a record, and certain tribes, definitely. Okay. The trans might be a little over inclusive.
Yes, I was just gonna say, be prepared. Number one.
Drastic overreaching area, they say a lot of.
Tiring.
Yeah.
Empire County.
Yeah, they do, um, they've got old campsites all along the lake shore. All along the lake shore, and along the river, and pretty sure, pretty sure, pretty late, okay.
Then we need a so what style statement, right? It's like, so if we do have these identified, what do we do? Do we just? Do we mitigate? Do we avoid? Do we require a study that shows no impact?
I think if somebody proposes a development and it's on the map, then you you inform them, but it's up to them to figure it out.
Oh, you're talking the that goes.
Either Historic Society or the tribes.
They have no teeth on enforcement though, right? I'm starting with, like, or the Native American tribes, like, what are they gonna do? Coming and asking, please don't build there? Okay, it should be on us to help.
I'm sure there's probably some buildings. Standpoint that.
Oh, there aren't.
Somebody said, well, hey, you know, I want to go tear that down, what do you do? Say no.
There's vegetation under the boat that. And ship on.
I mean, document it, do whatever you do now.
Yeah, you you document, you modify, you write a book about it differently.
Okay.
Preserving the record. Well, so did we solve that?
This was an easy. All right. So are we gonna deal with M L Bs? Or not? It's on the agenda.
I have a, I have an update for you and kind of, uh, what staff has been working on, and I have Alex says like a. Defining the problem and what we're working on, um, if you're ready to move on to that.
Let's hear that.
Yeah. So. I'll give you my overview, then I'll pass the mic to, um, to Alex. So one thing I, so we had a brainstorming session, or a bunch of notes from that, from the planners. Um, from there, we've identified the major concerns we have with these code sections. I held a workshop with the board today, and part of that was a discussion on waiver of land division, which is an allowance for a twenty acre parcel creation without. The the minimal standards, depth width and ingress egress. Um, the board would like us to review that as well, um, they're not proposing any. Changes at this time, which is something to be aware of when we talk about these administrative approvals on land divisions, so take that into consideration and workshop it. Um. I have the, one of my planners is creating, um, a comparison list for Mr. Lynn Scott's request. Um, um, and I think Swatty did a brunt of this before she left, to be honest, and she had like what standards per each file type. So we're adding building location permits into viewing that to ensure that it meets today's code, because this was a couple of years old. Um, so we should have that ready by the next meeting, not not next Tuesday, but the sixth, I think is the next meeting, that's how I'll start the hearing next week. Um, I also have another planner doing an analysis of. The last, so he's he's done back to twenty twenty, and he's gonna go back to twenty fifteen on family exemption files to see. Like, are they still within the family, the best that we can tell? So is this a problem that we have to solve or not? So is there an issue with somebody using the family exemption, creating these items, and turning around and immediately selling them, or within a couple of years selling them? So.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
Cause at at one point in time, if if you do see that, it's in someone else's name. You can determine fully the time that they have, get held on to, because we used to have language in our.
Right.
Um, and so that would be beneficial too.
Yeah, so I think what we're gonna have is like the date they're created, and then the day they change hands, and what appears to be a different, uh, family member, right? So we're just using last names, and then who who it was gifted to, so so what's the average length? But I think in the last four years, only three of them have changed hands out of the, I think, thirty or so applications, so.
Were were they? Were they divided into multiple lots or or just two or what?
I don't know, um, he's still preparing that report, he just kind of gave me his brief, uh, feedback and said, I, he wouldn't have. The last ten years done by today, but he had just the last four or five. So there are some other indicators in the last four years, you've had a an increase in property values, an increase in interest rates, so. Less people are motivated to to leave their their homes, because they're getting into something more expensive. And more costly on interest, so. That's why I wanted to go back at least to twenty fifteen, and then give you like a more of a ten year, um, review, so I'll have that report ready by next time. Let's see. Let's see. I think that's that's what I've been working on, um, we have a number of. Of potential solutions, what I'd like to provide to the commission is like. Three different possible, um, scenarios, uh, solutions to the to the issues we have identified, um. I'm not, we're not gonna take a position on any one of these changes, but giving you guys some ideas, um, of what to consider, so. I think you you have received a couple of emails, I think Susan Drunheller sent you guys some emails regarding. Like, her position on it, and I think we're getting some other public comments on it, so.
You know, I think, I can't remember if you sent it to us, or I saw it someplace, uh, a memorandum. And there were some key issues in the memorandum for them on for.
Mm hmm, that's what I presented to the board, it's on the county planning website, so.
Yeah. That, in my opinion, are the issues we should be rolling out.
Mm hmm, absolutely.
But I don't know if we need to go down some other rabbit hole, um, I've I've seen some things posted online, and I'm like. And I actually went back and lost me, I read that, well, this is your key list, but.
Mm hmm.
And they did match what some people were portraying.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. I I think there's a, the one of the major conflicts is the the two year clause versus the changes that we made in twelve. Six hundred C, which like we can't use the. Series of a voters, I, uh, we put together, I had Alex put together a list that gets it, it takes my memo and just give more and beat to it, and. Yeah, you want to, and this is in your guys' drive, um, under today's date?
Yeah.
Like, where'd you drop it about? Agendas and minutes.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
So it may be in your drive under agendas and minutes, um, and you can take a look at, uh, what Alex has here today.
Sure. You know.
Which which are we looking at, there's.
Uh, so it's the minor land division and family exemption inconsistencies.
Under today's date.
So if you go to agendas, then a reading packets.
Agendas. Okay, we're back to share drive.
Yeah, back to the beginning of the shared drive, you guys, in this minute of reading packets. Twenty five, and then to these dates, which is the twenty five.
Oh, very nice. Right here? Go, go, today's date.
And then he also put together these, in all these scenarios, still saying what you presented before.
Yeah.
So these are the same that we presented to the board, uh, probably a month ago now, um, of how to how to interpret, so he's kind of led to. A little bit of what we asked them.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at M L B scenarios or?
Um, well, we'll be looking at both, but I'll start with the inconsistencies. Um, so the biggest conflict really is the. Is the, um, inconsistencies, is the conflict between twelve, six hundred C and. Twelve, six eleven, so twelve, six hundred C in today's code reads is unlawful for a person or group of persons acting in concert to attempt to avoid this article. By acting in concert to divide a parcel of land or sell subdivision lots by using a series of owners. Or conveyances, or by any other method that ultimately results in the division of the lands into a subdivision or the sale of subdivided land. So the intent of that, um. Of that code was to prohibit, um, consecutive minor land divisions, um, and. To, um. Prohibit, um. Loopholes in the code from people transferring. Land or consecutive land to each other to be able to do multiple. Uh. So this is a, it it's supposed to, uh, be fairly broad and catch, um, any method that would avoid the regulation. Um. But then we have the definition of a minor land division, which is any division of land into four or fewer lots or parcels. Um, there's an exception for lots that are under common ownership and limited to use to common open space or agricultural pursuits. Uh, these are not counted as lots for, uh, for the purposes of determining applicable land division procedures only. Um, a minor land division shall not be continuously, uh, used. Um, a minor land division shall not be continuously uh used continuously to avoid the regular subdivision process. Um, so essentially, I mean, this is supposed to um. Define what a minor land division is, but it does have some issues that. Um, it it makes this a little more. Uh, narrow than the um twelve six hundred C in its scope. Um. And it introduces a loophole that the lots under common ownership need not be counted, but. It doesn't um, it doesn't provide any. Language that says that these lots of common ownership shall be um dedicated as common ownership and non-developable, non-developable. Um, so there's an issue there where uh it's not something that we've seen before, but it is something that um. That should be um explicitly said. Um. Are there any questions so far?
I want to pull up. So I don't, I don't remember back in the twenty. One, when we were in twenty twenty-one, whenever we're having this discussion, was our intention that that it was. If you were creating, if you're doing an MLB. You were creating some lots. And you were, you created a lot that was gonna be held in common ownership. And. And limited and used to come in open space or agricultural pursuit, but that would not be part of the four. So you could do five if one lot was. Common ownership and dedicated for open space.
Yes, that's kind of.
I'll make sure I'm interpreting that correctly.
Well, because. So here I I find it. Yeah, because there's a provision in Idaho State statute uh fifty thirteen oh one. Um. Obviously, I'm leaving. So we track the land dividing the viable more parts with lots or sites for the purposes of sale of the. Build development, whether immediate or future. Provided that this definition shall not include a bona fide division or partition of agricultural land for agricultural purposes. The bona fide division or partition of agricultural land for agricultural purposes, showing the divisional land into lots of which are at least five acres or larger. And maintain those agricultural lands. So yours can't be a top room definition of subdivision to do with this definition. But there's a clause that is provided that this definition shall not include the agricultural land divided contract. There's no. Pre-recipe that you have to have a all under ownership.
Right.
And so I don't know how. I just wanna make sure that we're not. Gonna be trying to create something that. Would inflict with Idaho statute.
Sure. Um, well, and that and that's what we're we're trying to address, right, is. Um. Any of the inconsistencies that there may be uh between. Barnum County Code and um state statutes.
Um, if you look under the definition of subdivision, that is, it specifies a division of land into eleven or more. Round this, the term subdivision shall not include a number N A. Um, is a lease of agricultural lands or agriculture for agricultural or agricultural purposes. So I think that's what I'm trying.
But there's a little bit of general because I think that there's sort of maintain that in common ownership, county code. That that's. That's not a pre-recipe statute. How do you determine whether it's being held for architect or agricultural pursuits?
But you would have to de-restrict that property for ag purposes only. So I. I think. Yeah, I think that's what they were considering at the time is what that statute said, so yeah.
But as far as trying to determine what a bona fide agricultural pursuit is. You're gonna find that in the agricultural uh agricultural exemption. Confusion. You, so what happens when the agricultural? Ax use. Terminates.
Yeah, can't do any work solid on. Good question. That's the big question now, very. Change of views because of circumstances. Does that, does in the law creation become an illegal law creation and is that issue a permanent on it? Good question, maybe. So I don't know how many of these have we seen them look down in.
I don't think it has none.
We have one MLB that was denied and then later appealed under that specific clause. And I think what we required was a this was two or three years ago. I think it was Jake Weiner, actually, that did that and. He said, well, I'm gonna restrict this specifically for ag purposes and then do restricted that for certain block.
Oh, that was the code section you were sending through, Matt? Uh, well, we got fifteen dash thirteen oh one. Uh, and but then, you know, that that question was what constituted bon- constitutes a bona fide agricultural? Pursuit, so it's maybe. You're gonna find out it's sixty-three six oh four. Which is the ag exemption. And it says. The total area of land, including the home site. Is more than five contiguous acres. And is actively devoted to agriculture, which means is used for. To raise still crops, including but not limited to grains, still crops, fruits, vegetables. Uh, nursery stock, grazing of livestock as part of a four property enterprise. Is in cropland retirement or rotation program. Uh. So so we. So uh, does that code section that you thought in the fifteen? With two oh one. That conclude. The application of cert plan?
It just says subdivisions. It's the definition of subdivision in state statute.
It also gives us the clause to identify and define subdivision, how the county.
How the area of the county wants to. But the mill section is provided that this definition shall not. Include. Uh, shall not include. A bona fide division or partition of ag land for agricultural purposes. So. So somebody having a legitimate farm activity, they wanted to divide it. That would be. Not not have to abide by. The subdivision description in the code, now code. Just one. I don't, I don't be, I don't know how it would.
Better on. I'm gonna come with two, because that means. You couldn't apply. The uh, third plan, you couldn't apply minor land division. For reasons, except there are. Can't do anything.
I don't know.
But. Okay, all right, well.
Could I go back to the lots under common ownership? Is the loophole that you're concerned about that somebody would come in and do an MLB for five lots? Claiming that one was gonna be held in common ownership and then turn around and change that and then.
Right.
They've essentially created five lots where they should have had to go through a short plan.
Right. But yeah, let's see the.
Well, I guess they, in in theory, they could create multiple lots in above four. And say, well, these other four are gonna be held in common ownership.
Right.
And they turn around three years later and say, oh, well, no.
This brings it back.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the loophole you were concerned, and you said you hadn't seen that happen.
No, that's not something, well. It's not something that we have come across in our department.
Yeah, okay.
So I I'm just remembering back in the nineties when there was a whole bunch of people who were doing. They do a short plan, four lots. Three zoning size lots and the remainder. And then. So it says this can't be re-divided. That it was controversial with that, but then they come in sometime later with. Part of the remainder, another three lots. And a remainder, another two lots and a remainder, but pretty soon you got. Fifty lots out there of zoning size.
In the short.
Yeah, short, short plan, always before MLBs. But that what led to somewhat led to the MLBs. Because of that, that quote of use. They're certainly making the subdivision system. And it didn't create roads, it didn't create all kinds, so it was a problem. But that, and I, that's when I came into it in the nineties, it probably been going on since eighty-seven.
Okay.
Keep going.
Okay. Um. So on the second page, there's a little table that identifies kind of the conflict between the two. Uh, code section, so uh the first issue being the um anti evasion principle. Um, so twelve six hundred C is a broad prohibition uh that. Required or that prohibits any series of actions or ownership shifts. Six eleven only prohibits continuous use of MLBs. Um, so. We've had and we've actually uh had some in the recent past that. People create lots through an MLB, say they're in a suburban zone and they create five or four or five acre lots. Um, and they sell all those five acre lots and that to different people, no connection, nothing, just. Just. A regular person, normal person, whatever. Um, not a family, not a family member or business partner or, yeah. Um, so. Um. Then that person says, well, hey, I can divide my lot into. Two and a half, so. It what, so yeah, is it the? The it kind of runs into a property rights issue of, do we stick with the? Um, what twelve six eleven that says you can't do contiguous minor land divisions or does everybody have the right to divide their property? Um, regardless of how it was created.
Doesn't meet the zone.
Yes, so what in that case?
So the question, does it go with the property or with the one?
Yeah, right.
So is this property restriction or an owner issue? And typically, before it's been owner restricted. It's often interpreted that I don't know. Because that same scenario like I was painting before, it's all about. And the reason the remainder went to. Billy Bob's own. He came in, well, Billy Bob's fifteen positive, Joe Brown.
So many go into the further conflict that this same principle has on the two-year clause and twelve six hundred. Yeah. Uh, which you probably already.
Twelve.
Well, six, twelve, or whatever that.
Yeah.
Six eleven. Um. So, yeah, then we.
So if I bought a lot. I bought a five acre lot, suburban zone, which means I could uh. Do. Put it out, it could possibly. It would be a lot more.
Sure.
Depending on the local services. Why shouldn't I be able?
If if the law was.
I don't have any relationship with another guy to look. At all, uh. Yeah, they, yeah.
So if the law was created by a minor land division.
A de restriction. Is there a de restriction that goes on anything that's created by minor land division saying, that just can't be for the dollar?
Um, not on the. Plot, but it would be a condition of the approval of the. Um. Of the minor land division itself. So on staff report, we would put something along those lines down.
Okay, repeat that, so. Why not do what?
No, that's something that currently happens, so.
Exactly.
There there's no restriction, no, no plot restriction per se, and it is a condition of approval on the staff report that provided.
Let's assume, let's assume something, let's assume that. Um. Only the short flat five lots. I I would have bought. One of those five lots. In a suburban zone, at five acres. Why should? I mean, I I'd be able to do something like that with I am. Two or more. And and conformity with his own. If that's true, that's true, then why, you know, what's the difference?
Well, and and and. I I watched that when you got ahead and done all those examples on that. I don't, I don't wipe it away. And I thought it was my understanding of the the board kind of agreed if. You know, if you have an MLB over here. The same owner has an MLB over here. And so the piece in between that that person is a different owner. Should be able to go ahead and do an MLB. So long as they're not related in that. You know, cousin, not a cousin, I mean, his grandparent, child, sibling, brother.
Sure. I'll draw some area for the next.
Awesome. I like the first.
So then we'll take that five acre, five acre example, right? So you get a short plan. Um, that gets created. So you create these seven lots, right? And this, they had to build a road, the road is here. So you buy the lot on the end and say, I want to divide this and have the MLB. Each of these gets sold to somebody, not a family member, the guy who did the short plan. Okay? When it gets divided in half. You're required to put an easement for access via the current requirement, so maybe you get an easement access up here. And the guy next door says, hey, I want to divide this too. That's a great idea. We can make some money. So then you use that easement. When the guy down here does the same thing, so hey, can I get an easement to that that driveway you just built? Sure. Right? And you go down the line and each of these gets divided off series after series. So now. You have this substandard driveway that's been turned into an easement access for accessing seven more properties that don't meet any kind of of road standards.
Um, I'm doing a question, Alex, I don't know how long ago this was, but you mentioned, make some comment. Kind of a scenario, I think it was on priest like some water. And the first two houses, we get the scenario was like four houses. And at some point, that road had to be built to to spec. I can't reach the first two happy or the last two.
That's that's a, that's a different one. So there was a definition of road versus driveway and.
Right.
So many people access it and needing setback standards for that as a driveway or a road versus or street versus driveway, sorry.
Oh, I thought I thought had road had standards as well.
No, so the road specs would come into play during a shore planner or.
Right, or. The building location committee, you still have to verify that that fire chief signs off on that access.
But then we're putting the onus of the road construction rather than on the land division phase on a fire chief to to give us some kind of standard.
The last guy in.
Yep.
Has to march.
Yeah.
Well, that, good night, that, oh boy, that. That has gone to Supreme Court.
So then you do the same thing with Panhandle Health, right? Let's. Yeah, if if we require some kind of sign off or review at the short flat phase. For these seven lots, then these guys are held to a different standard. So. That's really the rub. Do we, and this is the concept we see pretty often. The other side is um. Is on those higher density zones. Sorry, I totally stole your thunder. I I I gave you the same, you know. So. On the, on the higher density zones, when you look at um suburban and Alpine and Brad. You're quite anything under, anything under five acres required to have a river front, direct frontage on. The minor land division never calls to that standard. It gives specifics. Um, so then you can get a minor land division that divides off. Via an easement, a piece here and a piece here. So now you have a one acre piece, a one acre piece and a one acre piece that's been divided in a water district, for example, with maybe a water main running down this way. But that's also not required because there's no infrastructure requirement for final part of the minor land division.
Okay, so my my example. So so the answer to that is this where all, everybody do a short plan.
That's a good answer.
So they have, so they have, so they have, they happen to comply with the same rule of standards. As the original uh subdivision that was that was done by a short.
And so a lot of those things, so my understanding is on the short flat. A lot of things aren't triggered until the PLT stage and those as well.
Oh, yes.
The law standards is the big, so some solutions we've come up with, right? So I don't watch, it's gonna give you guys problems, actually, to solve, right? That's one thing we will look at in house. So. One, one solution we have that we've come up with is. You can't use a minor land division to create a lot under financials. So it it solves all of the urban service issue because you would never have an urban service. It solves the road frontage issue because then you're never gonna be dedicating anything on a frontage of a of a public grid as a requirement. The other things we have is calling back to the specific standards in the subdivision code. So let's see, what else did we come up with? You can't create a lot. That could be further divided. So you can't have a remainder fifteen acre piece in an R five zone because. That also fixes the issue of of continuous minor land divisions because then the fifteen acre piece, you can't create within the MLB. So. We've come up with a handful of these types of solutions. Which would solve some of these immediate concerns. Um, but I I don't know, like. I I would like to spend a little bit more time working, workshopping this and putting some. Like pen on paper and give you guys uh kind of what we could go with that.
It it sure seems like, and because. All this has been discussed before when it was subdivision short blocks in the state code. And that was causing various problems. Various issues, so it's like.
Yep.
Um. Can we have a good track on what those issues were that they would then solve with the with the MLB?
So the, from my understanding, the major concern they were trying to solve was illegally created properties. So someone just just via deed, beating off pieces of land.
Oh, yeah.
Um, that was the major issue and at the time, there wasn't. Um, a line of communication between the planning department and the land records. So now I've built up a pretty decent uh lines of communication with. The assessor's office, the land records, GIS, so as these things get mapped and get recorded, we get flagged. We flag the properties, you know, building permits ever get issued. And someone buys, it happened, and someone buys a property and they want to get build a a structure on it or build a home. And we've had like red flag on our systems saying, oh, this looks like it's illegally created. Additionally, I have my staff doing more deep research. On any building location permit application so that um we can try to patch those that haven't been given to us. So and we do on occasion finally, so. It doesn't seem to be, well, right now, we've had an easier process on land divisions for some time, right? So. As you become more restrictive, are people going to continue to follow our process or just circumvent and create illegally created properties and what the compliance issue? And create illegally created properties and what their compliance issue, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was not only the solve, it was solved. Is there, is there some procedure where the recorder won't record? Uh, subdivision?
They don't, they don't can do that, I don't.
But the recorders required by state law to record everything they receive.
Well, it it has to meet their specific standard, and if the deed. Uh, meets like the criteria of a deed, they report it. So even if, we had it for a little while where um. If it didn't have a planning stamp, say a twenty acre lot creation didn't have a planning stamp. Uh, they would send them downstairs, um, they got some pushback from some members of the public. And uh, the reporters office decided, I, we don't, we don't want to fight with folks, if it meets our requirements, we're gonna, we're gonna report it.
Hmm. Yeah, I thought there was something up there now that's either on the website or upstairs where it says, it explains that. Maybe that was in past, recent past. Um. There's a state statute, but so does I have to record anything that's presented?
It it's gonna beat their requirement, good Mr. Orange, you probably made it right.
Well, you have to have the grand lord grantee to add the rest of white language. Has to be no rise. Other than that, I got ahead and because yours show. Years ago. I got ahead and I recorded warranty, that was quickly. I even had no rise. Recorded. Well, we can description. Just to show that it can be, it had, you recorded. You'll have it, you can record your shoe. You recorded it, yeah, yeah. Now that was a long time ago, maybe state statute has changed, we're probably talking thirty, thirty five years ago.
So just because they recorded, does the county have to recognize it?
No.
No, so the, when it gets recorded, it gets pushed to land records and that lot is created for assessment purposes. But not for building purposes. So the assessor is the one that controls the land records and. But as those deeds get recorded and things get divided, it goes through that process, and I haven't talked to the assessor to ask, I. That's a good question.
If we can't stop them from recording, I mean, illegal lands, but can we stop them from from it being recognized?
For what purpose?
So that they don't sell it to some poor schmuck that comes in thinking he's gonna build his dream home and he gets in here, finds out the fact that it's immediately created land and can't do anything.
Who who's gonna do the review of each one of those?
I don't know, I'm asking a question.
Because the expertise in the county, when you look at the deed, so the recorder's office looks at it and says, okay, does it meet the criteria to look like a deed? Right, yes, it does, we're gonna record it. It then goes to the to the mappers in the land records department to to create that, like, what does that actually look like? If it got sent to the planning department, we don't have the expertise to say, okay, that meets five acres, therefore it's in a five acre zone and it's got our standby and it's good to go. Like the, I think assessors are. I'll double check, I'll I'll I'll, let me, let me. Review that process again.
It seems to me, so the recorders have to record everything and the assessors can't stop it. And nobody else in the county can stop it, then we're not gonna solve any of these M L D family exemption plans or any other problem because. Everybody will just find that he's just proud.
No, 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 because what what we do have is that the land records department reviews these deeds, right? Anything that's created via deed, any new property, so not plots, right? Plots, it's clear, you don't record a plot without coming through a planner, okay? It requires our signature on it and the county commissioner's signature and all that. So we're talking unplatted lot creation. So when something comes across the land records desk, it says, and that's the ones that realizing and putting lines on on the map. This doesn't have a planning stamp on it, they shoot it over the planner. Right, they still draw the map, they still draw the 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 lot out, or sorry, the parcel out. But they do send it to us and we flag it in in our side, so whenever someone comes to get a permit. Then. We have it flagged, right, so that new guy, I just got sold this property, it's five acres, here it is. I need to get a building location permit. We say, no, this was illegally created and on this date, and here's our, our string of of our.
That's what I mean, it's too late for that poor schmuck that bought that piece of property.
The importance of due diligence before you.
But I, you know. But if you check it.
They do a public record request, you might have heard, yeah. We we do them all the time, people do speculative um public record requests. I'm considering buying this property, what what's all the information you have on this? Oh, it looks like here's a deed that was created. That illegally created this property, here's the issue we have with it. Yeah.
I've never heard this, like, create the planning part. And and you end up, if it's illegally created partially, you can end up with such particular compliance.
Yep.
That's the process, that's the after. There's nothing to prevent that. Creation of that lot by deed, so uh, we have this memo that Alex highlighted here. Um, and what you going through there, basically, I'll read it.
Um, yeah, it it really, the rest of it really spells out, um. All of the concerns that were brought up during the moratorium, so fire safety. Um, really, the the biggest thing is that. Every other land division calls back to twelve six two three D, which requires fire protection plan. Um, either a fire, they require, they're required to provide a fire mitigation plan and also provide fire mitigation. Uh, on the face of the plot, so there's a few different options that um the subdivider can choose to put on that plot. Um. I don't have them committed to memory, but um it it at least. Yeah, right, and at least uh during the B L P phase. Um, triggers the buyer district to say, hey, this is what's required on your plot, so show me the plans for your fire mitigation. Um. That helps, I mean, I know that, uh, I'm not sure what the emergency responses, response times are here, but. Um, some of the um fire districts do cover a very large radius. Um, so having those fire mitigation, um. If that fire mitigation infrastructure in place. Um, even for a small development, uh, as such as a four lot. Uh, land division uh would be, uh. It it is something that this is currently lacking. Um, and it just doesn't, um, it just doesn't jive with what we've got in uh in code now. Um. Next would be uh infrastructure and utilities, is there any questions on the fire safety thing? Okay.
Um, which I, again, I mean, last night I talked to the chief about this and he's very interested in in getting together and establishing those, at least for those we district, I'm pretty sure the other fire chiefs are as well.
Sure, yeah.
So they want to do it.
Um, so, so, yeah, the infrastructure.
Come and give input to it. Oh, yeah, absolutely, I asked him if he could, delighted, so he was kind of on call to come in here and talk with us.
Yeah, I I believe that's uh something that we've got as an idea to bring in stakeholders to. Yeah, sure, given, but.
Why not?
I think we should, once we come up, I I, what I would like to do is workshop these, our drafts with you guys, come up with a planning commission draft. Do a stakeholder meeting where we invite the, you know, all the relevant agencies that typically review these, give us input, we should probably invite um surveyors as well and get their input on it. On those processing these type of things and helping those, just try, it's similar, it's a similar process to when they created a minor land division and. They had these stakeholder meetings and then they did some round table or round robin around the county and did some, everything four or five different, so. Um, yeah, anyways, go ahead. Um, so the next one would be the infrastructure and utilities, that's something that we kind of went through already. Um, but in the short plot and subdivision, uh, the preliminary plot applications, I should say, we uh require um. Improvement plans, which would include, could and uh usually do include. Um. Roads built to either public or private road standards. Um, utilities to be uh put in place, utilities more as in uh sewage and water if applicable. Um. But we don't, we don't currently require for power, gas or anything like that. Um, so.
And M L D doesn't have any of that.
It doesn't, so uh the M L D doesn't call to any design standards. That's the one big issue.
We we lock it to out design standards.
That's a, yeah. It it has depth to it. Yeah.
That's intensity.
And submerged lands. Submerged lands, depth to it. Zoning size, but um in any infrastructure standard, like I said before. If, if they're inside of a sewer district, right, and they provide a will serve letter that says, I'm gonna connect these three lots, and they create two, three, twenty thousand square foot lots. There's nothing in the code that requires that sewage line to be built.
Hmm.
That's that's what's required in short plot, that's required in subdivision. That's why one of these solutions is don't allow lots, you know, through minor land division to be created under a certain size limit, right? That would require any of those infrastructures, so that that might be a solution, um. Or, yeah, yeah, but. That's one of the major concerns, like, there's no infrastructure required, so typically. On land divisions, platted land divisions, it goes to a preliminary plat phase, that's our hearing process or the administrative review for the planning department. All those plans are 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 required upfront. We review those and we issue a decision on a preliminary plat. Then they have a bunch of conditions, like, as in go build all these things or bond for them. And then we'll do a final plat, minor land division skips the preliminary plat and goes right to final plat, so when they get the staff report, it's the final plat staff report and then they have a handful of. Conditions, only those required per that, per that specific code section, and then a final plat can be recorded.
Cause, cause right now, even the family split has to, you know, through all this.
Some of it, yeah, it has actually a little bit more standards for review. It it at least explicitly says that in its code. Um. So, yeah, and that's, that's the, um. That's the thing, it just doesn't call back to any of that, and it's not something that. We require to be done before recording a final plat or um to be bonded for like we would in a short plot or a subdivision. Um. Next is the roads, and we've talked about that before, um, minor land divisions only require. Access easements, it doesn't require anything to be built out. Um, it just has to show legal access on the plat, so it could be, it could be somebody, I mean, there's a lot of people that do build nice roads that. Um, go into these divisions, or there's people that just say, well, you have. You have access, you just have to cut down all these trees to get to your parts.
We're on roads and emergency access, right?
Mm-hmm.
That second part, no requirement for secondary access, short class going to be defined, do they, or do they?
I believe the secondary access comes in as a certain amount of lots that. Right, favorite fire, fire district review, which might provide a a condition of approval for a second access point.
Yeah. But it says code lacks provision for secondary merchant routes, but what I'm saying is I don't, I'm not aware of any design. In our current code for short class, but not right now.
We don't have anything codified for.
Okay.
Access points, but like I said, there's agency review, so if a sixty, well, not. Someone did a contiguous short flat, which we don't allow now, but let's say they did like a phase and they're adding ten more lots onto a current subdivision that only has ten lots and somehow, yeah. And, uh, I mean. If the fire manager comes in and says, hey, this needs a second access point, we can add a condition of approval on that final plat to require a second access point.
Right now you can?
Yeah. I mean, it's the same thing with the subdivisions, right? We don't have an.
I have not a subdivision.
Sorry, I don't need to be competitive.
A long time since I have a subdivision.
Yeah, so the subdivision standards are the same, like, we require that agency comments. Um, and then if the fire district comes back in and says, per our adopted fire code, these are the requirements for this um subdivision or short plat, then we're gonna have those as condition of approval on the final plat.
But yeah, the wishbone entrances coming. Right, so my own concerns right now. We're telling everybody, well, they can do a family split by doing the short flat, which brings all this stuff up, just for a family split. Boy, any land division right now, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's a good one here.
Yeah. Um. So next was the emergency services access, it's similar to um two above, so that's. Just a core, uh, there's no coordination with emergency services, like I said, there's no fire mitigation plan, fire departments aren't routed until um building a location permit, so. Um. There's a a lack of. Um, a lack of coordination for fire and emergency service safety. Uh, or or emergency services, um. And the the standards of addressing and signage typically come out at the B L P stage, um, but. Um, it's not something that's required during the minorly division and. The G I S department may say that it's, um, that they'll be required to put in a new or to name an access or um name a road, but that's really about it. Um. And uh there's just some additional considerations, it's just providing a lot more um consistency between. Um, all land divisions, uh, especially if the minor land division, um, does stay in the code. Um, there. There should be some uh continuity between all land divisions, um, and this one just seems like it's out on its own. Are there any questions so far on the minor land division?
Something to be, is uh. On these various things, if you can kind of contrast. You know, what would be required on a short plat?
Yeah, so that's something Matt brought up last week, and I have most of the spreadsheet down, but it's gonna be all the requirements of. Subdivision, short plat, minor division, a family exemption, it'll have all as the sort of code sections and then the file type, so I'll get that to you guys by next meeting, well, before that, I'll email it to you. And I I apologize, there was a. My, I was rearranging my document. I didn't uh bring some of the things with me. Um, yeah, well, on on the, I didn't bring it on the, on the page, no, yeah, it's on here. Um, so there was a a potential revision to um six eleven, um. For a minor land division is any division of land into four fewer parcels. This threshold shall exclude any parcel placed under common ownership and explicitly restricted from from development by plot deed or recorded covenant. For purposes such as common open space or agricultural use. Minor land division should not be used whether continuously, sequentially, through shared ownership or by an any other means to circumvent. The subdivision process. So on that. Um, page that we were just on, that gives some reasons as to why this. Um, may be a good change and um it. Uh, so it would, it would preserve the legitimate, non-developable, open space exemptions. Um, it would close the evasion pathway that um and the loophole and the um. Conflicts that we have between those two codes. Um, it directly um references, references twelve hundred, twelve six hundred C, um, and doesn't, obviously doesn't conflict with it and then. Um, emphasizes more of the intent of the code, uh, as it was um meant uh when it was first written. Um. So, um. Now we've got uh key issues with the family. Uh, divisions. So the number one is the uh loopholes through rotating family transfers. Um, so the code does currently restrict. How many parcels somebody can be gifted, but it doesn't uh restrict how many parcels someone can gift. So if I own a hundred acres, um, or let's say that, um. My my parents own a hundred acres, I get twenty acres from them, and thirty years from now, I want to split it off. For my kids, so I receive that as a gift, I can't receive it one more time, but then I'm transferring those. Uh, through another family division to my children. So it, it still circumvents the subdivision code. Um, but it, there's still a loophole of uh keeping, as long as it's kept in a family, then you're still. Um, dividing those properties and properties off. Um, and not following proper subdivision procedures.
Well, that that, can you talk about your risk as an example you have there?
Yes. Well, similarly, so this risk example here is, yeah, so. Parent gives parcel A to child one, child one later sells it to child two. Parent then gives parcel B to child two. So essentially. Yeah, I get a lot for my, I get a parcel from my parents, I sell it to my brother, my brother then gets a lot, another lot from my parents. So there's still a.
So I don't see a problem with that. I don't.
Okay.
Well. It all falls apart when your brother sells it to somebody down the street.
Yeah.
Right, that's the, that's the ultimate problem. They're doing this for the convenience and ease of a family. There's no guarantee that the family is gonna hold it in perpetuity. Well, and I, and I maintain the reason why it was done. So I.
I don't understand the principle, but boy, it doesn't. Regulating that is, how do you do it? It, we used to have a three year clause, but how do you enforce?
Well, you three years.
Force somebody to own that for three years, do you get restricted to?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, it used to say that if if it's sold or or given away within. Part two years, I think it was two years, I'd be wrong for sure, um, then then you, they have to go back and apply.
But I think. And and it's too long to discuss now, but I know why. Two years. Um.
Also a not the straight of the alienation. Is this the whole purpose for M L Ds to save money to the property owner?
That's what I was asking earlier.
Right, what we're also saying, well, we don't do financial. As a criteria to make our land decisions, well, which are.
I don't think it was a cost perspective as much as it was a an easier process, so.
Well, same thing.
Sure.
Yeah, so you can't have it both ways.
I I didn't, I didn't write this code.
I'm not, I don't mean you specifically, but.
Yes.
But. Well, we discussed it at the time. There's a question of not imposing unreasonable requirements.
Right.
Okay, and the discussion was, well, if you're only creating, by the way, it's not four, it's three. You're creating a maximum of three parcels. Maybe I should do your averages over, okay? Do your averages over, please.
What are you talking?
You say the averages are three or four, great. I mean, so you say three created is the average.
I think I, we had, I started pan, I think I said that.
Yes, people have. It's, you create three parcels. I mean, the discussion was three parcels. Is unlikely to have a significant impact on infrastructure and et cetera, et cetera. So. Don't put them through that process. That was the logic.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, such as it is, right? That's what we discussed.
Which involved with the cost and time.
Right.
And and somewhat, some people brought this up, both sides, exposure.
Yeah, you do exposure, what's my neighbor, what's my, what's my neighbor doing? So.
Is is part of the issue, the abuse of the family exemption? And not so much the division? I mean.
Not so much what?
Having a family exemption and the abuse that they're gonna sell it off eventually, and so they. The county or whoever hasn't made the money off of the the division of the property or. I mean, I know I have a situation and I.
It's a question of whether or not.
It's divided correctly.
Avoid subdivision, or the subdivision standards of creating lots.
Right.
Not, you know, some of the. Counties.
And that's the change to rural.
At least these particular. Uh, divisions are are just a. A way to avoid requirements of the short plat or. Have or subdivision, so higher performance standard requirements to come with those formal subdivisions.
I understand that.
You know, that and that's, that's the biggest part of the problem, I see it. Um, those things are missing and if if the. Ownership had been by through subdivision that would have been addressed. So people are picking away at it. A little here, nothing, a little here, nothing, a little here, eventually, all right, things done. So that's, that's the underlying problem.
Well, yeah, and that's what the, like Jake said earlier, we've got somebody working on. Everything from now on to see what, or from fifteen to now. Um, of how the ownership is.
Does it mean not even know that there wasn't true issue with the rail plant?
We identified probably three or four, and to me, the bigger concern was if you. Put a moratorium on minor land divisions, all of a sudden, everybody becomes family, the family split becomes the least, like the popular, the path of least resistance. So.
But you're only.
And there's, there's still performance and standard issues with the family exemption that is similar that exists with the minor land division, so. You're gonna solve one, you should review both. You're getting more to moratorium on one, you do it on both and you solve the. The standard issue for both of the easier processes. So. Like I said, the. The family exemption, my, the concerns we had, like we, we really need to do a deep dive into, is this an actual problem? So that's, that's some of the rationale, why I'm looking back and creating this report of, uh, has this been abused in the facts? I have, it's a twofold issue, or twofold concern. Has it been abused to create land? That would, that then sold hands, so essentially circumventing the subdivision process by claiming family and then selling it off. Um, and then two, what are the standards that are being reviewed and are those appropriate for that, for that type of land division? Does that help? Okay, so I don't, it's it's late now, gentlemen, um, if you wanna continue to read this, we're happy to, but it's spelled out pretty.
I think we can read it.
Okay.
I have a question, that's kind of a process.
Sure.
Um. On our plate right now, we have the R V thing, which I think is just a hearing, but.
Yeah, it's scheduled for the twentieth of May.
But are we gonna have? If you guys have it at some point.
There's no workshop, I mean, we've basically been directed to the.
Well, I think at the, at the last meeting, there, the workshop was scheduled for a hearing. If I remember correctly.
So we have that on our plate. We have, we have this issue, M L D, family division, exception, whatever you call it. Um, and then we have, we need to finish the implementation. Which I would like to do, I would like to do that sooner rather than later. You have a hearing on twenty second, which is next Tuesday.
Yep.
We have a workshop on the twenty fourth, the commissioners. And then we have a meeting on whatever that is.
To make sure that.
Twenty nine.
So the, what's six twenty nine? Oh, no, you don't have one on the twentieth, you have one on the sixth.
Six.
And so three weeks from today would be the next regular scheduled meeting outside of the hearing next week.
Well, when, when are you guys gonna be uh able to present uh more information on the M L Ds?
On the sixth.
Yeah.
You give me three weeks and I I can give you a lot more.
Okay, well, what I, then what I would like to do is have an extra meeting on the twenty ninth. And see if we can finish the implementation part. Yeah, we have, we have uh six, six more to do and then we have. But we have to finish up with the land use uh portion. Uh, I don't know if people are willing to do that or not. I'm willing to do it, but I just like to get it done.
So on the twenty ninth, you will be.
Right. We can deal with the M L Ds and family. Exemption on the twenty ninth and whatever, if we don't get it, everything down on the twenty ninth, we have. We can carry it out. Hopefully we can get it done.
So we have, we have workshops with the board on the twenty fourth and the first. Right. You know, it's.
It's on my. Twenty fourth and.
I sent an email about it um last week. So is there B O C C land commission workshop on the land use component?
When, when days are?
Twenty fourth.
And then again, the fifth.
Down on the fifth is not.
The fifth is the next one.
Made it? No, you not made first.
It's made fifth.
Right.
At one thirty as well, and that's a, it's just another workshop with the board, so if you can't make, make one, or make the other early.
Right, same subjects.
Yeah, yeah, given it's such a big subject, I thought we would. And I'm gonna get the board everything tomorrow so they can start reviewing it. If you guys make any other changes next Tuesday, we can present that on Thursday to the board. They wanna just start a process to review, it's scheduled, tentatively scheduled right now for a hearing, I think on the twenty eight. Twenty eighth with the board. Of May, the land use component, assuming you guys make a recommendation next week. So I haven't sent a notice or anything out yet. Um, if you don't make a recommendation and you guys wanna take more time to read that. Um, or call additional hearing, that's fine as well, and we can reschedule the board staff, so.
Okay, you said the twenty fourth, what was the other date?
The fifth of May.
And what's next Tuesday?
That is the hearing for the land use component, so when we finalize.
That's a real live use hearing.
And we did get some, two comments, one from uh or comments from two different cities. We've got another, a handful of other public comments that are pretty substantial, so I'll get the, all that over to you guys tomorrow.
On what?
On the land use component, so for the hearing next week. So Dover and Cootenay both provided a. Um, comments from the city's perspectives that we haven't seen yet, so.
Then. We haven't seen them?
Uh, we, I just got them, I think yesterday.
Does that deal with their area of impact? Or interest, whatever it's called?
It deals with a number of subjects, but mostly land use designation around the city limits. And within the area of them.
You can send those out to us?
Yeah, so what I'll do is start, I'll drop everything into your guys' drive and I'll send you a location where it's at in your drive and then um. I should be finalized, I'll finalize the staff report tomorrow. Today was the cutoff for agencies provide public com- or agency comments. And public write public comments, but those will all be incorporated in the staff reports. I've got it ninety percent done. And then um I'll be publishing it tomorrow on the, on both of the county website for public review and then to you guys, we will review.
They have the, the workshop on twenty fourth is at one thirty?
Yep.
Yes.
Sure, the other one, I think it was very long this.
So, uh, all right, so. Is everybody cool with the twenty ninth?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Everybody's on the phone. All right, so uh with that, uh, any other, any other business?
We have one person with a hand up online, if you want to take a public comment. Curtis?
Hello, Curtis?
Actually, this is Ridge Crawford and I'm gonna withhold comments. I've listened to this conversation and now I'm all over the place, but I will submit some. And hopefully have a chance to submit them uh either in writing or at another meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh. With that, no other business? Uh, we're adjourned until uh uh next Tuesday. And that's at four thirty?
Yep.